Meeting of October 6th. Our first item is the warrant, motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Any discussion? If not, all in favor, opposed? The minutes of September 22nd.
I'll move.
Motion by Brian.
Second.
Seconded by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor, opposed? Invitation to speak? Okay, we'll proceed to our first public hearing. We have Attorney Warren Heller representing Royal Buddha. This is the hours of operation, as you can remember, about six months ago. There was an infraction and the board decided to suspend the hours, cut back the hours to 11 o'clock. So the six months has expired. It'll be, I believe, in a few days. So Attorney Heller is here to talk to us to see if the board would extend the hours back to the original time. So with that, turn it over to Attorney Heller.
As you know, this is Benjamin Eng who's with me, his mother Cheryl Ling, and his uncle, Edwin Moy. They are the officers of Royal Buddha, Inc. I understand that Mr. Valani has a report for you, and I'm basically going to defer it to him. My client has done his penance, and you'll see and hear that there have been no incidents since we were last here. And so we are here requesting the reinstatement of the restoration of the hours.
Rick, you have a something for the police chief?
Yes, I did reach out to the police chief to see if there were any incidents during the past six months. He indicated to me there were not, and he did not have any objections to reinstating their regular hours before the suspension.
Okay, with that, we'll go to the board members. Brian?
Yeah, no, I don't have any questions or any qualms. We got the police chief's year-to-date report, and that confirmed that everything's been running fine. So, I mean, clearly, it was a situation, and it's passed, it's passed, and hopefully everybody learns from it, and we go forward and continue the operation. Very good business, it's been here for a lot of years. So I wish you the best.
Thank you. Bill?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think the parties know and understand how the vote was, and specifically, I thought, in my opinion, at the time, and I still feel that, that if not for the behavior of the individual who entered the premises and started throwing things around and became physical, that this incident wouldn't be here, and you wouldn't be in this situation. It isn't always... Bars and alcohol establishments aren't always capable of screening customers and knowing what their behavior might be prior to them walking in. So I voted against the sanction, and I'm happy and pleased to make a motion that we suspend the current prohibition of hours against this establishment to go back to what it was.
Okay. Motion by Bill?
Well, the motion be to restore the original hours.
Restore the original hours.
Okay. Friday, 2:00, Saturday, 1:00, right? Seconded by Brian. Any discussion? And we certainly want to thank you for having worked with us, and best wishes and good fortune going forward.
Ben wanted to address the board briefly, so...
Before, one second, sir. So, all in favor, opposed? That's unanimous. Go ahead, sir.
No, just wanted to say, you know, one of the things that was mentioned at the hearing prior to me, you know, sanctioned on our hours, was that brought up a lot of history of what happened at the Royal Buddha. Things dating back from '97 and on, of bad things that might have happened. You know, it just reflected a lot of things that happened to me myself. A lot of dates went back even before I was 18, even before I was old enough to even be in high school. Again, it's just about history. Fact of matter is, as you know from my history, I went to Japan, did a lot of business there. One of the people that I worked with while I was over there was a company known as Mitsubishi with Mr. Yamato. Now, if anyone knows anything about history, the Mitsubishi created war machines and attacked the US and whatnot. I didn't hold that against Mr. Yamato. I never mentioned that, you know, "You attacked America, and I don't want to do business with you." It was history. And like you said, moving forward, I mean, what happened in the past with the Royal Buddha restaurant, even before my time, is the past. Now, I'm a businessman, I will move forward, and hope that you guys can come to the restaurant yourselves. I definitely invite you guys to come, so you can see yourself what kind of business I run in this community. So, you know, like you said, moving forward, past is the past, you know, that's all history. And I really hope that you guys can see that this isn't a bad place, that yes, perhaps there is some bad history at this restaurant, well before my time. But if you guys can just come and take a look for yourself, the kind of business that I have run since day one, since I took over, you will see that this place, that's all history, has nothing to do with how I operate the business, how I run the business. So, please.
You have a fine family.
As a regular customer, I could highly recommend you should take him up on his offer to come dine with him.
You know, my colleagues like chicken wings, you could have brought a few chicken wings, you know? All right, say it. Thank you, sir.
Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
See you again.
All right, thank you.
Warren?
Good to see you.
Thanks, Warren. Okay, next we have the town treasurer, Irene Larabee. And Irene will talk to us about one of the greatest topics of all time, the insurance rate increases. Just before, Irene, we've always had a great relationship in the past with former treasurer O'Shea, with the committee, the insurance committee, working with the unions, and I think, as always, even though our rates always go up some, I think if you look at the area communities and all that, I think the percentage increase is always great, and I think that's just a great testament to the committee that we have, the consultants and all that. So, you know, insurance is a tough nut. It has to be handled, it has to be dealt with at the national level, and until that happens, it's going to be very, very difficult for communities. And, you know, we all feel that, you know, the single person trying to pay every month is very difficult. If you have a family, the family portion of it is just unbelievable, and small business, so it's a terrible situation. But we do the best we can, and we appreciate all the work. So please convey that to all the committees and all that, okay?
Definitely.
So with that, go ahead.
Insurance advisory committee, no?
Go ahead.
Yes, what we're discussing tonight is the increase for retiree insurance rates only. The retiree insurance rates increase every year on January 1st. We currently have three plans. We have a plan through Fallon, we also have one through Tufts, and then we recently added Blue Cross Blue Shield. What I did was broken down what percentage the town pays versus what the employee pays. I don't know how detailed you want me to go tonight. Overall, with the Fallon Senior Plan, there's two significant changes. One pertains to the Tier 3 drug prescription program. It's going up, in some cases, by $5 for a 30-month supply and $10 for a 90-day supply. And they also have a small rate increase where the retiree portion is going from...I'm sorry, I'm just double-checking. The net increase to the retiree, I'm sorry, isn't available, so I'd have to calculate that for you and bring it back. I apologize for that, it was a last-minute addition. With the Tufts Medicare Preferred, with that item, it's a net increase to the retiree per month of $3.60. What they did with their plan is they actually added a weight program to it, where you can go through a weight loss program, but they're very specific. They indicated you can only use, I believe, Jenny Craig Nutrisystem or a hospital weight loss program in order to receive that benefit. And with Blue Cross Blue Shield, their rate increase, net increase, is $11.84 to the retiree, as well as to the town. And one of the things that the Blue Cross Blue Shield added by feedback from our participants in our last program is an interactive, not interactive, I'm sorry, a wellness program that gets to exercise, walking, gym memberships, et cetera, where they reimburse you up to $150 a month. That's something that our prior plan had something called Silver Sneakers. So this was something that we heard very loudly from our participants, that they wanted something from Blue Cross Blue Shield, so that has been added as of January 1st. One of the things I do want to note, the net increase of $11.84 to the retiree, we actually saved about $44 per month for the retiree by going to Blue Cross Blue Shield. So our net increase to the retiree, taking that savings into account from June, as well as adding this increase, you're still looking at about a $30 savings per month to our retirees. What we plan on doing is to roll this out to our retirees in a letter format, if you approve these tonight, as well as have an open question-and-answer session at the senior center, and we confirm the date of October 30th at 10:00 a.m., where Kelly will be there, as well as myself and the vendors, to answer any questions the participants have about any of the plans. So we'll have representatives from each of the three programs there, and if retirees choose to switch programs, if they want to go from Blue Cross Blue Shield to Tufts or vice versa, they have until November 14th to submit a request to make that change. So the representatives will be there to answer questions of the pros and cons between the different plans.
Irene, the Fallon plan, according to this, has three participants, right? Tufts has 54, and then the majority of people in Blue Cross, 280?
Correct.
Okay. And as far as that, you know, we've always had that relationship, we've always had those meetings that you may have, that you'll have in October?
Yes.
But anybody can stop by the office anytime if there's any question?
Anytime we're available.
Okay. Can you just briefly, quickly go over this last page?
Sure. The last page actually just outlines the retiree changes and their rate plans. So basically, with the Blue Cross Blue Shield Premium, it's going to be $143.36 a month. Fallon Senior goes to $93.30 a month, and then the Tufts Medicare Preferred is $82.05 a month.
This would be their share, right?
Correct, effective January 1st.
And for Blue Cross, it's $143 a month?
Yes.
Okay. And your discussions during the past few months from the consultants and the committee and all that, what are happening, what is happening in some of the other communities as far as rates, do you know?
What we're seeing in rates, I typically look at the MMA website to see the trend over into all the communities, and it's been anywhere from 8% to 10% increases in health insurance.
I don't know how we can absorb that going year by year, it's just incredible. But it is what it is.
The majority of the plans, it depends on your usage as well.
Sure.
The communities that have less usage, fewer claims, usually are able to get the lower rate as opposed to higher usage, which you usually see a higher rate.
In the past, we've always talked about, like, when there are large claims, when people are really, really sick, how has that been like this year compared to last year? Any information on that?
That's something I don't have, but I can definitely get that information for you.
All right, at this time, we'll go to the board members. Brian?
Okay, so we're going to continue to offer the three plans?
Yes.
And...I don't...so you don't have percentage increases on these numbers. I see that the Fallon, currently, it's 307 a month, it's going to go to 331, but I'm not missing, there's not a percentage increase here, is there?
No, it's something that I was trying to just show dollars, because that's usually the question we receive from retirees and from other people. I can definitely get you those percentage increases.
It's about nine, four and a half, and nine.
The current premium of Tufts goes from 261 to 273.
Nine, about four and a half.
Yeah, no, I mean, as the chairman said, it is what it is, and if nothing else is certain in life, we do know that insurance rates are going to go up every year.
Yes.
It would be nice to see something that were contrary, but that is not a problem specific to this town.
Correct.
It's a national issue, both on the municipal side and the private side, and insurance companies are laughing all the way to the bank. But, you know, I think this work is good. In relation to what else is out there, these increases, you know, are very reasonable, and hopefully it's something that our retirees can live with.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Bill?
Yeah, I could go on and on about the insurance and insurance rate increases, and I think part of it is what's being driven is the large buyouts. You see a lot of bigger corporations buying out smaller hospitals and smaller companies, and it's not, they sell it off to the state as an opportunity to reduce costs and reduce overhead, and it's frankly just not doing that. Not sure at a state level who it is that's reviewing it and who it is that's approving it, but I think that's certainly part of it. The other thing is, and I've heard from retirees and I've heard from municipal employees, the tiered system. Now, with the tiered system, many of our municipal employees are forced to get diagnostic services, they're being shipped off to Marlboro and Framingham, when we have a great hospital right next door. That tiered system doesn't exist in mass health, and it certainly doesn't exist for folks that are coming in who aren't citizens of the, residents of the, citizens of the United States, they're not being shipped around, but our first responders are, right? Our police and fire. I know you're not defending the rate increases. It's a matter of fact, it's what the rate increases will go up, and there's not a lot that you can do about it. If you had the means to do that, we'd have hired you for something much different and at a much higher pay. I do appreciate you bringing this information forward, and I'm not trying to shoot the messenger, you've got a tough task here. You have to balance all the needs, a lot of different financial responsibilities, and then bring this forward. It's unenviable. But all of that said, I appreciate it and thank you.
And also, if you have feedback regarding some of the services that are being sent out of our local community, and you let us know, that's something I can definitely follow up on. We do renew our contract every year, so it is something that we can leverage.
Well, let me give you some feedback on that, then, while you ask that. It's a shame that Milford teachers, Milford firefighters, Milford police, municipal employees are being shipped out away from Milford Hospital. Milford Hospital has done a great deal to improve its services. Frank Zaba and his staff have done a tremendous job. They're right down the street from us, and for us to need to go get x-rays, or, not me, I shouldn't say me, but for our town employees to have to go get x-rays and diagnostic services in a different tier, to a different hospital and go to Marlboro and Framingham is crazy. So if there's anything in the negotiation process that you can do for our municipal employees not to force them to leave Milford, that would be helpful.
Sure, it's something I can actually address with Blue Cross this week and see what we can do.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have, so, Chairman.
Anything else? Okay, is there a motion for the new rates?
I'll move.
Motion by Brian?
Electantly seconded.
Seconded by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
Okay, so maybe you can get back with us with that information, okay?
Yes, definitely, I'll follow up with our rep this week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, right on schedule almost. Now we have Vani Reese, town engineer, regarding the youth center, Milford Pond, and any other questions that the board may have for the engineer.
Well, not any other questions, but...
Let's see, what can we ask Vani?
Yeah, exactly.
Eighty questions, why, you see?
Where are you on the insurance rate increase?
I think it's horrible.
There you go.
All right.
This looks familiar.
It should, to you at least.
Yeah. Probably pass that on. Yeah. Yeah. Oh, is that one copy of these? Yeah, that's, yeah, just wanted to pass it on. Okay.
There may be extra copies.
Oh, okay.
I would like to start with the youth center tonight. So, at annual town meeting, the town appropriated $5.083 million for the youth center reconstruction. And on September 11th, we opened the bids from the general contractors, and we had four bids. For the base bid alone, the low bidder was Five Star Building Corporation at $3.791 million. However, Five Star Building Corporation did not have a responsive bid, they forgot to include some of the information they were supposed to, so we had to throw their bid out. So RAC Builders became our low bidder at $3.866 million. When we, so when we were putting the bid together, there were, we had to set up priorities because we were concerned about the range of the bids that we might get, and if you look, the two higher bids are above what we had budgeted for, for the, just for the base bid, $4.2 and $4.4 million were above what we had budgeted for, for the reconstruction. So when we were putting the bids together, we set priorities, and we made them alternates to the bid, so that at a very bare minimum, depending, if the bids came in high, we'd be able to do the structural repairs and the mortar repairs and the extreme, you know, the essential things, the ADA compliance, the elevator. But none of the alternates are, were ever considered optional. All of the alternates are required to make this a functional youth center. So when we evaluated the bids with the alternates included, RAC Builders came out to be $4,254,324. And even if Five Star Building Corporation had not been unresponsive, the, when we added in the alternates, the low bid flipped to RAC Builders anyways. So it made that part of the process very clean. RAC Builders with the alternates is the low bidder from the four bids that we got. So there was some question about the bids coming in low, did we appropriate too much money? And the short answer to that question is no. The architect's original estimate for the base bid was $4.2 million. The low bid came in about $7,000 less than the architect's estimate, which is less than 2% off, which is amazing. They, our architects, OMR Architects, did an amazing job for us. And then once we add in the alternates, it gets us within $126,000 of what we appropriated. So we really are right on budget for this job. We've been very lucky, we did all the reference checks and everything on the, both the general contractor and the subbidders. It looks like we have a really good team, we're going to have OMR Architects on our side, on our team, helping us during the process. And the, at the moment, the youth center, they're just finishing up getting everything out of the building and vacating the building, and our notice to proceed to RAC Builders is going to be dated October 13th. So as of October 13th, the project will be starting, work will be underway at the youth center. So it's pretty exciting, we were very lucky, we got good bids, and we're in a good position.
Brian, you want to add anything to that?
No, I talk to Vani a lot on the youth center, I'm all set, this is for your benefit and Bill's.
Bill?
Yeah, Vani, this is...so we're rejecting the low bidder for non-compliance to the bid spec?
Correct. Correct. They weren't responsive under the law.
Well, yes and no, because then when you took into account the alternates, they're not the low bidder anyway.
That's correct, yep. So once, so once we, so I put together a spreadsheet, when we got all the bids, I put together a spreadsheet and analyzed, under Chapter 149 law, you have to take the alternates in order. So the low bid plus alternate one, who's the low bidder? The low bid plus alternate one plus alternate two, who's the low bidder? And when we got to alternate five, it flipped from Five Star Builders to RAC Builders. Alternate five was the replacement of the windows, and at that point, Five Star Building had a very large number on their windows, and they were no longer the low bidder, so...
Who's the low bidder?
The low bidder is RAC Builders.
Okay. This document's dated 9/11/2014, and I guess my concern, and I'll share it with you, and I'll share it with town administrator, I don't remember seeing this before. So this is, the bid numbers, the analysis of it, is not something I've seen before. Was it, was it your expectation that we were going to vote this evening to accept a bid? Or, I'm just wondering?
No.
Okay, good, good.
No, the committee...
So this is just...
Under our jurisdiction.
Information, okay.
The Armory Renovation Committee has already seen all the numbers, and they have actually signed a contract with RAC Builders.
Good, good, good. Okay, because that's why I was, I didn't know we were going, this is an FYI presentation, good.
Yes, exactly.
And then I appreciate it, and, you know, anything you can get us as it comes out, that's appreciated, and I appreciate you taking the time. I know you, I think, live out of town, so coming in on your off-hours to give this, and you've been working with the youth commission as well, the youth center folks to, in the evening, I appreciate that time as well. Okay, I better understand it now. So has a bid been approved yet?
Yes, we have signed a contract with the general contractor.
And the architect.
And the architect, and they're ready to start.
And it looks like you're going to come in, you said $125,000? Is that, I'm sorry?
Yeah, we have, we're going to come in $125,000 less than what was appropriated. We have, that's about 2.5% less. So we have a small contingency built into the project, and, you know, that $126,000 gives us a little bit of float in case there are any major changes.
So you've got the 10% contingency on top of, on top of that $125,000. Now, I know from the presentation, which I've said before, and I'll say again, the presentation that you helped and participated in and helped put together, along with the architect and selectman Murray, was a great presentation, and it helped people go through this process and understand it. I know that you opened walls, for example, I know that you did a great deal more than what might have been done in order to anticipate what costs might be coming in, and to give bidders the opportunity to see what exactly the situation was down there. How comfortable are you with the contingency? As we've rolled along to this point now, different bidders have come in, people have worked with you, they've pointed out different things. Are you still as comfortable as you were at the time with the contingency?
That's a great question, yeah, we actually are pretty comfortable with it, given the fact that the bids came in very close to the architect's estimate, and there were some of the bidders during the bidding process, we did two separate walkthroughs of the building, and some questions did come up, and they were addressed during the bidding process, so they're included in the prices that we got.
Good.
So we feel, we feel pretty confident.
Okay, so they've seen everything, and with...
They have, yep.
That's good, that's good. No, I appreciate it, I appreciate the update, and, you know, I don't know whether your plan is to have, this is a significant project, your plan is to have Vani come in every couple of months to give us updates, status updates, that would be helpful to this board. I know Brian has a unique opportunity as chair of that committee to see them on a daily, weekly, monthly basis, but...
We can make sure we get updates, I can get written updates also.
I'd be happy to do that, and of course, it will always be in my monthly report, too, on what's going on. But I will be daily involved in that project, and then OMR will have a part-time resident engineer on the job as well, so between the two of us, we'll be keeping a close eye on things.
Yeah, actually, I'm glad you brought up the monthly report. The monthly report, I think I remember seeing one.
Yes.
There hasn't been a second, right?
There will be, we have a second, I'll get it to the board, yes.
Okay, because we're not seeing those on a monthly basis.
Okay.
Just so you know that, I didn't know, you said it as if you thought you were.
I'm sending them on a monthly basis.
Yeah, yeah, all right. That would be helpful, and actually, you may want to leave it, depending on how the other members feel. If we get the monthly updates, that may be sufficient, and then we can just talk to the town administrator if there are any questions, and maybe we can bring you in on ad hoc basis and let you know what those...
That's fine, whenever this board would like me to come in and talk about any projects that are going on, I'm happy to do it.
All right, very good, thank you.
I think information, but I think face-to-face is always more beneficial. Okay, thanks, thank you on that.
Okay, so we're ready for Milford Pond? Okay. So, we're ready for Milford Pond?
Same thing?
Yeah, just one.
Thank you.
September 11th was a very exciting day this year, 'cause we also opened bids on Milford Pond on September 11th. These were opened in Concord, though, at the Army Corps of Engineers headquarters. So, the Army Corps estimated 3.43 million for the total bid. If you look at the first figure that's in your packet, on the right-hand side, there's, uh, towards the upper end of the map, there's an area that's blocked out that says Pond Dredge Area, approximately 17.3 acres. And that's, that's what the Army Corps is calling the base bid. And to the left of that is a smaller, um, finger-shaped parcel that is approximately one to one and a half acres. Um, it's about 20,000 cubic yards of dredge material. That's the, um, that's the alternate one. So, again, that we structured this contract such that if the bids came in high, we'd be able to do the original amount, which is 250,000 cubic yards of dredging. And then we had an alternate so that if the bids came in a little bit lower, we could add more dredged area to the project. So, the Corps' estimate for both the base and the option were 3.43. And the bids came in between 4 million dollars and 6 million dollars. So, the low bid was Palmer Federal. Um, the Corps has worked with Palmer before. They're actually a spinoff of a company called Charter that has done a lot of large dredging projects nationwide. Um, the Corps feels very comfortable with the fact that they won the bid. Um, and they've worked with them before and they know what they're doing. The, because the bid is slightly higher than what we had originally estimated and then what we had figured out in our financials with the Corps, uh, with their, their 65% share or 35% share, the town is going to have to contribute some additional funding. However, we received a grant from the state from, um, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs for 250,000 dollars for Milford Pond specifically to pay for part of the dredging. And so, with that additional money, we do not need to go back to town meeting or ask for any additional appropriations. We have more than enough funding to cover us, um, for this project. So, the, the, again, this is an FYI. The Milford Pond Committee voted on this. Um, Dino and I have discussed this. We've sent a letter of commitment to the Corps for an additional 170,000 dollars above the 1.75 million that we had already committed. And, um, that will come out of the grant from the state. Um, part of that will come out of the grant from the state. Part of that will actually be paid for, um, in non-cash credits. So, for example, right now, we're carrying 50,000 dollars non-cash credit for the value of the real estate. Um, and once we have the real estate appraised, we're, the Corps will give us that credit. Um, so we may end up contributing less than 170,000 dollars in actual cash. We're in a very good position, though. Um, and, um, so we have, we have agreed with the Corps to go ahead and do this. They are putting together their contracts with Palmer Federal. The contract will be between the Corps and Palmer, not the town and Palmer. Um, but we'll have copies of that. The Corps will have a resident engineer on the site during the construction. And the, uh, we're not sure what the schedule is yet, but we anticipate that they'll want to come in, in this fall and start mobilizing, bringing in some of their equipment and probably setting up some of the Corps logs that will form the boundaries for the replication area that is going to be a result of the dredge material being deposited on the other side of the pond.
Yeah, we, uh, we went up last Friday, the administrative, Vani and myself, and we met with, uh, John Connolly and all the project engineers. And, uh, you know, we're very fortunate to have, and that, the Army Corps of Engineers, they, they do all type of works, uh, all over the place. And, uh, they were very, very comfortable, as Vani, as Vani had said, with Palmer. The, uh, once the bid was awarded a couple of weeks ago, they give the contractor, there's like a 20-day grace period where they go back and forth and answer any questions they may have. Um, everything is very detailed, scientific. Uh, there'll also be, uh, probably in a couple of weeks, there'll be a pre-bid, pre, pre-construction bid meeting in Concord, nor at, at Fort Devens, right?
At Fort Devens, yeah. And that's actually scheduled for next Wednesday.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
And then after that, we plan on having, um, a pre-bid construction meeting here in town. And it'll be, uh, Vani, of course, the, uh, park commissioners, conservation commission, Highway Sevilla, the two police chiefs, town administrator, um, you know, welcome to come to the meeting, of course. And then after that, the, uh, the goal is to, to bring in the equipment down at the site. And hopefully, the equipment could be, I mean, I think we're used to, we're used to doing things. And when someone says two weeks, it's always four weeks. So, hopefully by around Thanksgiving, the equipment will be brought in, um, at the site. Uh, we're working very closely with the park commissioners and the park director to make sure everything is blocked off, the safety factors. And we have to work out some logistics, um, when baseball starts in, uh, April. They'll try to do as much, it, it, as soon as the ice begins to, to form, then I think, um, they probably won't be able to do much work. But until the ice is formed, they'll be able to do some work. And then they'll begin, um, in late March, early April. And it'll probably take about a year and a half to complete. There'll be a, as Vani says, there'll be a clerk, uh, at all times. Uh, there'll be direct contact between Vani and the contractor and the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, they're very excited about this project. Um, like I said, Palmer, they've, they've worked with Palmer. Uh, Charter is a national firm. They've done, um, work at the Louisiana, uh, different dykes in the, in the country around the world. So, very, very comfortable. The, uh, you know, so many people, as we, as we have said, deserve so much credit. Uh, this board, uh, Brian, Bill, for your support, Vani, the town meeting members, the finance committee members, uh, the committee, uh, the Army Corps of Engineers, Congressman Richard Neal, who, uh, was able to engage the, uh, Army Corps of Engineers to be in, on this project. And we had said that at the town meeting that, uh, we, we weren't going to go back. And we worked very hard with, uh, you know, Representative Fernandez and Senator Moore to obtain the 250,000 dollars. And that certainly will go a long way. We'll also have, um, two boat ramps available for the, for the general public. And there might be some other things that we can do once we get started and complete the project. So, um, there'll be, uh, bi-weekly meetings, monthly meetings. Uh, I'll make sure that the board is updated on at least a monthly basis on what's going on. You'll be invited, uh, once we have the, uh, ground breaking or water breaking, whatever it's called. But everybody's...
Whose water's going to break?
Let's not get into that, huh? Uh, so, we're very excited. And, uh, hopefully, we can, once everything is done, because there's a deep water section right almost parallel to, uh, Rosenfeld, uh, no, Plains Park, there's deep water there. So, hopefully, once we get started, we could probably maybe have 19 acres, more or less, of dredging 12 feet deep. And, uh, it's been very, very complicated, very tedious. We've had to go through hoops. Um, all the agencies and the regulatory, uh, agencies have been very, very strict with the town. And, uh, but I feel that we have a, we've signed on for a very good contract. And most importantly, so many people have been involved with this project for a long time. And we certainly want to thank all of them. And, uh, but all that, this happened over the past couple of weeks. And then we, like I said, we had a meeting last Friday for three hours. And then we look forward to those meetings at Fort Devens and also the meeting, uh, in this room, probably, uh, last week of October 1st, first week of November, more or less. So, that's about it.
Dean, just have a quick question.
Yeah.
Can we expend the funds from the grant without further appropriation?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
And, um...
Also, Bill, that Zach, very, very closely involved with all the expenditures, just to make sure that, uh, you know, everything is checked off.
I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, yeah.
We could help expedite anything, if there's anything we could do. And who actually awarded the bid? Was it the Army Corps of Engineers?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So, it wasn't...
On September 29th, it was awarded.
It wasn't the, uh, Pond Committee, it was the, actually, the Army Corps of Engineers?
The Pond Committee voted to go forward, but they, they actually awarded the bid.
Okay. No, I, I, you know, I've said it every time, Dean, you know, look forward to the time when, you know, this was used many, many years ago, look forward to the time in the future when the grandkids of people that were able to take advantage of that pond and boat on that pond are able to do it again.
Then, thank you, Bill. Then at the town meeting, we have an article to protect the investment that, that we're putting into this. Um, there'll be some regulations for, you know, electric boats, the type of boats that you can put in, uh, how some of the boats should be maintained so that the invasive, invasive species won't get into the pond. And, and, and so, we want it to last at least 50 years. Uh, we'll also be doing something for Louisa Lake. The Milford Water Company has, has come forward and they'll, they'll be helping us out with a $5,000 contribution so that we can do some of the weed control and, and prevent some of that stuff from happening again. So, um...
Yeah, we had people out last week, uh, treating the phragmites with herbicide. Um, our, our goal is to not transfer any of the invasives from one end of the pond to the other during this project. So, we're take, trying to take care of the invasives now before the project starts. Um...
Of course, we have the well field, the pool, the dam itself.
Yeah, it's, uh, it's a little tricky.
People don't think there's anything out there.
Yeah.
A lot of things to navigate around, so, uh...
There's a lot of stuff we don't know about.
I'm sure, I'm sure.
But also, I just wanted to mention with respect to the boating article that Dino just brought up, that is actually a requirement, um, from Natural Heritage because of the endangered nesting birds that live on the pond. Um, they do not want any, any loud motors. So, we're going to prohibit any gasoline or diesel motors. Electric trawling motors will be allowed. Um, and then the requirement to wash boats is, is pretty much standard everywhere these days for the reason that invasives will get, um, transferred from one pond to another if you don't do that. So, it's, um, but it is, but it is part of our agreement with Natural Heritage as part of this project.
Is the Milford, I mean, I'm sorry, is the Charles River Watershed Association helped it all, offered to help finance or contribute? I would expect this to be...
Financially, no. They have been very supportive. Um, they did write a letter of support when we were applying for the grant from the state.
Yeah, they've been very supportive. It couldn't have been successful if they had not been supported. Uh, a long time ago, I met with Bob Zimmerman at the bridge. And it was a long time ago. And, uh, I told him what we want to do. And he was, you know, at that time, well, there's a lot of work that has to be done. If, if everything is done the proper way, then we'll certainly support that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions. So, so Vani, looking at the map here, uh, the bid option is about, what, two, two acres? Is that correct?
It's, just based on...
I don't see it written here.
It's not written on here. The bid option was 20,000 cubic yards of dredge. So, um, if you calculate a 10-foot depth, that works out to be about 1.3 acres.
Okay, so you got a total of about, uh, 18, almost, almost 19 acres total?
Correct.
And just to get a sense, it looks as though the dredged area, uh, now with the option is going to start, uh, pretty much behind the Rosenfeld Little League Park, continue, uh, behind the condominiums, Columbus, Genoa, all the way down, uh, towards the Machijano Club and to the, uh, dam at Haywood Field.
That's correct.
Pretty much, almost going to the midline of the pond. That will be your, your, your deep water, your dredged area.
Yes. And at the, um, where the neck of the pond narrows at the dam, um, it's going to be as close to the pool as possible.
Yep.
So, that area will, um, the weeds and, uh, phragmites that's in that area will get cleaned out as well. They can't go too close to the pool because they don't want to undermine it structurally, but...
Right. And then on the, um, restoration area, and, you know, I'm not sure how, well, this has been publicized or, um, what people realize, but it looks as though we're going to be creating four islands.
We're going to create four raised islands. That's correct. So, some of the material will be deposited, um, so that the, the level will, um, remain one to two feet deep so that it'll, it'll still be a marsh area. Um, and then the raised islands will be two to three feet above. They won't be, um, they won't be the type of area where you could take a boat out there and go have a picnic. But, um, they'll be, they'll provide habitat for the birds and, um, other, other, um, well and species. And, uh, we also intend to plant white cedars and, um, bring back the white cedar to Milford Pond.
And that looks like it's in the general area, uh, behind, uh, Dilla Street, uh, probably Landscape Depot and, and all of those spots in that general part of the pond. Um, so this, this is not going to, actually, probably should help, right? It's not going to impede the flow of water from Echo, Echo Lake, correct?
Correct, correct.
You're going to keep that channel or, or course or whatever it's called?
The, the channel coming in, um, for the Charles River will be left open. The channel coming in from Huckle, Huckleberry Brook will be left open as well. Um, and then the, um, the restoration area is, does back up onto Dilla Street, but we've designed it so that the abutters there will still be able to put their kayaks in. And they won't, um, they won't completely lose their access to the pond from the project.
And has the engineering, um, talked about, I mean, you know, I, I don't know what it's like when you dig up all this stuff, but is there going to be like a smell and stuff for people that live on Dilla Street? Or is that something we don't have to worry about?
I, you know what? I don't know the answer to that question. The material is very organic. There's a lot of peat. Um, so there may be, there may be some odors when they're actually doing the work. Um...
Probably disperse over time or probably won't be something that will linger or...
Hopefully, it will disperse quickly.
Okay, all right. Well, I mean, you know, it's, it's an exciting project. It's, it's one that's, uh, long been in the making. And, um, you know, it, it, it's encouraging to see the commitment, uh, to the environment. And, um, you know, hopefully, this will preserve this, this body of water for, uh, for future generations to come. Good luck with this, with this job.
Thank you.
This is not easy.
It's an exciting job.
This is not easy.
The Boy Scouts, the, uh, high school, uh, biology clubs and all that will be involved once we get it done. Uh, but it'll also improve the phosphorus in the Charles River, the water quality. So, uh, there are a lot of stakeholders and I think a lot of people will benefit. We did work very closely with the abutters to make sure their million-dollar properties have that waterfront. So, uh, they were happy about that. The, the pool, we worked very hard because at first they told us we couldn't cut those, what are those, what's that vegetation called?
The phragmites.
Phragmites. We couldn't cut that. But then we, we had a, a meeting here and we talked to the lady in charge and the woman in charge. And, uh, she understood our cause. So, we were able to go close to the pool, but we'll get rid of a lot of that stuff. And, uh, I mean, like I said, the Army Corps of Engineers, they're specialists. They'll work very closely with us. And we'll have the right people involved so that, uh, the work is done properly. And, uh, nothing will be done unless there's communication between the engineer and the Army Corps of Engineers clerk of the works. And we'll be down there all the time, myself, too.
Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Good job.
Just quickly about, uh, I think you talked about at the finance committee, $100,000 for the, um, Louisa Lake Dam.
Louisa Lake Dam? Yes, that is, um, we applied for a grant, uh, through the state for that as well. And we were denied the grant. So, uh, we are coming to town meeting and asked for $100,000 to do, um, a phase two, uh, report, which will evaluate, fully evaluate the structure of the dam and what needs to be done, um, a cost estimate and bidding document. a cost estimate and bidding documents so that we can put it out to bid and, and do the repairs that are necessary for the dam. This is being required by the Office of Dam Safety, so it's not, it's, it's really not optional. We need to take a good look at the dam. There is no immediate danger to anybody from the dam failing, just want to really make that clear. But the, but the dam was classified as a significant hazard due to a number of different deficiencies. So, that, that is why we're coming forward for this money.
Thank you for, oh, I'm sorry.
No, along that line, I'm glad that was brought up, along those lines. If you see anything else out there that is a matter of compliance or where there's, there's risk, I wonder if we could make sure that you work with the town administrator, I know you're new, and with that newness, I just want to make sure that there's some five-year plan or something. Because you received that feedback, I've received that feedback, though, that while there's, it's not optional, it's really not optional for the town to participate to, to fix that dam. It's been understood for a fairly long time that we're going to need to put some funds in it. And it wasn't something that we had put in our five-year capital plan. Now, as a matter of compliance, the options are very limited to the community, but we have to realize, either from an engineering standpoint, or even from a board of selectmen's standpoint, when we do that, it's unplanned and it steps ahead of everything that everybody's had for five-year plans, so. So, I say it not because I'm critical of where we are now, I'm saying it in the event that there's anything else that you see out there, I'd like to see as part of an engineering plan is what your anticipated five-year needs are for the town and where you see things like this popping up where we have to, as a matter of compliance, put some money into. At least that we can put it, that way we can put it into the budget.
Okay.
So, don't take it as critical, take it as constructive, as if you see anything else, let's look ahead with our radar and get it out there planned and on the list.
Okay.
Thank you.
Also, thank you for updating the residents on a regular basis.
Oh.
I had three or four residents call me and they appreciate
Oh, good.
the information. This is, it lays, you know, people's fears and all that stuff, so that's most important.
Good.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Vani. Thanks so much for all your work. Okay, next is town planner and the, one of the consultants on the G I S project. This is something that we've talked about for the past several months now, and there have been a lot of presentations and, you know, whether the board decides to do it in a couple of weeks, I think it may, I think it may, as long as we do it within that timeframe. But the consultant has additional information for us tonight, if we have any questions for her. So ma'am, you're on. Oh, Larry, would you like to make any opening remarks before you get to the consultant?
Well, just to remind the board that in May, we'd ask for funding to be able to have the needs assessment and implementation plan put together by our consulting firm, Applied Geographics. What you have, what you received, I think it was last week, was, was a draft of that. We were a little late in getting the report done because the finance committee had asked for figures in terms of estimates, cost estimates, so we kind of sidetracked momentarily to try and provide them with that information. So, I thought it would be good for the board to hear a presentation from, from Beth tonight and at least know where we are so far, and she knows a lot more about it than I do, so I'd like to turn her over to Beth Flynn of Applied Geographics.
Okay.
Larry, does this advance the slides for me, one of these buttons? Otherwise, I'll just operate it from my laptop.
No, I don't think this does.
No, okay.
We appreciate you coming, and just go slowly because this is tough information for the board to...
Tell me to slow down at any moment. Yeah, I am just going to go hit the, the highlights of the report, not dive in too deeply, but here's an outline of what I wanted to cover. There's a bunch more in the report, if you've looked at it at all, but I think this should suffice. I wanted to point out that this is one of about 120 of these studies that we've done for municipalities. My company, Applied Geographics, and we've done these studies for larger municipalities, Boston being one of them, Washington DC, Baltimore. We've done them for smaller municipalities, down to, you know, towns that are smaller than 10,000 in population. And we've also done over 20 strategic studies for states as well. So, this is one of those many. In summary, the, the project started by, with a needs assessment, which involves spending about three days here onsite with 10 of the town departments, talking to the staff, and then resulted in the G I S implementation plan and budget that I think you've seen. And I am going to, you know, kind of skip through a bunch of slides, but this one, if you have a little bit of patience, I'm going to dwell on for a minute because it just sort of paints the picture of where Milford's starting from. Larry has asked me, you know, is Milford typical or atypical from, you know, compared to the other 120 studies we've done? And the answer is, well, a bit typical, but not really every town is different, and this slide will characterize Milford's, you know, situation in particular. If you go back to 2011, that's the first, well, I, I should say, you start a G I S needs assessment in a town like Milford, and the first thing you do is look at the existing conditions, and it might be easy to say, well, you know, existing conditions, there's no G I S, period, end of story. But there's actually a bit more to the story, and I think if you look at this slide, you'll see Milford's really well poised, surprisingly, to move ahead. The first block there has to do with the statewide parcel, they call it the L3, parcel data standard that Mass G I S spent a few years developing. They basically standardized parcel data for all 351 towns. And my company did about 60 of those towns, Milford being one of them. And the, in the course of going through that parcel standardization for 351 towns, I think for Mass G I S, one of the byproducts unofficially was a bit of an inventory of where all those towns stand in terms of, you know, digital parcel data in particular, and then just G I S in general. So, if you were to ask the manager of that project at Mass G I S, Neil McGaffey, at this point, he has a pretty good handle on what, you know, what the existing conditions are across the state, and I think he's glad to know that because he's trying to shepherd his parcel standard along, town by town by town. And so, anyway, the first step, you know, the first bit of foresight I credit Milford with is to grab a hold of that data. The town was basically handed free digital parcel data by the state of Massachusetts. And, you know, several of the towns that were, that started from ground zero like Milford, there weren't many of them, but several of the ones that did took that data from the state and then promptly, you know, basically broke the project manager's heart by dumping it in the, in the bin. So fortunately, Milford was not one of those heartbreakers. They, you know, grabbed a hold of the data, said, what do we do next? Well, the logical step is to then start maintaining your parcel data, your property data digitally, producing your tax maps digitally, which Milford promptly did. And then, the next step after that is to say, now we have digital G I S parcel data, does that do us any good? You know, aside from being able to produce tax maps? And the answer to that is, yeah, I mean, these days, it's really easy to deploy data, like parcel data, any other data, to a website and make it readily accessible to employees and to the public. The aim, you know, in particular with a parcel-based G I S is to reduce traffic to Town Hall, reduce calls from militares and that type of thing, but also just to get the information out there to the staff. The next step that I really credit Milford with, this really is a piece of foresight, was to jump onboard the Mass Ortho Consortium, which gave Milford a chance to get high-resolution imagery at a reduced cost. And while parcel data is a key backbone piece of information for a municipal G I S, a detailed base map would be, you know, another one of those backbone pieces of information. So, the flyover is scheduled for the spring of 2015, and that flyover is the basis for what you would use to generate a G I S base map, a full-fledged, highly-detailed G I S base map. That's important for a lot of reasons, one, one being that you can leverage it into additional pieces of data. And then, so the next step is where we are right now, the implementation plan. So, I'm going to quickly go through the key recommendations that we've set out in the plan. One is to hire a G I S manager, and that's a short and sweet recommendation, but we stressed, I think, pretty clearly in the plan that our recommendation is that G I S position be a full-time position, a position that's G I S dedicated. We've, we work with, you know, a couple hundred towns in New England and see a lot of different models, or I should say, lack of models. The most popular being the sort of many-headed model where somebody who's tucked away in the basement of some town department, wears a couple hats already, is also wearing the G I S hat and trying to make the system fly. And that can be successful, depending on that particular person's personality and accomplishments, but in large part, it, it's really hard to succeed that way. So, the next, leverage the existing website and data. I pointed out in the history of G I S slide that Milford does have a, a G I S website right now. I don't know if everyone in this room is familiar with it, but there's 52 Main Street. And this just basically makes, you know, any data, it, it's a ready-made platform. It makes it easy to deploy any additional information to this website and then make it instantly available to staff or to the public if you choose to broadcast it to the public. So, it's, you know, it's well worth considering for a modest investment, being able to leverage that, you know, existing platform. This is just an example, there's the elementary school, an example of a simple piece of functionality that's out there for anyone who picks up on the website. That's just the properties highlighted within a certain, you know, number of feet from that particular property. The police department has used the website in a similar capacity, to some extent. This is not Milford. This is a town with stormwater data leveraged to their website. And I showed that because in the course of the needs assessment, there were several departments that said, you know, we just want to be able to bring up a street and know, is there, is there sewer on that street and where is it? And, you know, same question for the other utilities. And right now, I know the town has a stormwater project underway, and Vani was telling me that a, a good chunk of that data's already been collected, can easily be leveraged, posted to the website, and made available. Another key recommendation, purchase hardware and software. If I were showing this slide, you know, 10 years ago, this would have been a, a, you know, a very large line item in the budget. Nowadays, things are a little different. In fact, I have a short list of the hardware and software that we'd recommend, your basic G I S software, your basic G I S workstation. And one of the items in this list is portable devices, again, that was a common theme, running through the various departments, saying that they wanted to be able to access data in the field, you know, bring up maps in the field, capture data while they're in the field, and that's a pretty easy thing to do these days. Portable devices are pretty ubiquitous in municipal operations. Develop a G I S base map. Again, this would be developed from the flyover that is already scheduled for the spring in 2015. The base map will give you something that looks like this. This is, I think, the town of Milton. The features that are developed from high-resolution imagery include, as you can see on there, street trees, you know, street markings, utility poles, traffic signs, you know, structures, curbs, sidewalks, driveways, the works. And that information can in turn be leveraged to meet a lot of, a, a lot of needs, you know, particularly in the highway department, but in other departments as well. And I'll give you a couple of examples towards the end.
So ma'am, can we go back to that for a second?
Mm-hmm.
So, the, the whole scope of the program, the desired results would be this type of information and picture and information?
Yeah, what they do is they fly the imagery and then they have, you know, they photo interpret it and pick off features from the imagery that are turned into G I S data that looks like this. That's basically it, so.
No, you mentioned stormwater and sewer and all that. Would the dimensions also be on this, like how many feet, like exact amounts of
You mean of...
where everything is on the street?
You mean of like lot line dimensions or...
Yeah, like for example, sewer, how far does a sewer go down the road? Extensions and all that?
That's information that could be gleaned from it, but it won't automatically fall out, you know. You know, you could, for instance, go to this website and take a, pick up a cursor and measure if you wanted to, you know, how far is this from that? And that's information you could methodically capture, but it doesn't, it's not going to be given to you, no.
Okay.
Yeah, improved utility data was one of the other big recommendations. I mentioned earlier that, or maybe I skipped over it a bit, but the town does have some utility data that we would consider, it's, it's rough utility data, and the Milford Water Company and the Sewer Department, both using the same consultant, have developed some data that we believe, from talking to the consultant, is in various stages of readiness for G I S applications. It'd have to be looked at a little bit. So, that rough version of the utility data could be very quickly put into use, but the long-term goal would be to improve that utility data to the point where it's, you know, serving more robust needs. That's in, that says screenshot, I think the website is Gloucester's. Gloucester, I think, must have a heck of a DPW department because that table of contents runs like, you know, not like a dictionary, but that just gives you an idea of, you know, if you bring up, Milford's website right now, you see an empty street. What you'd like to do is be able to hit a button and see structures and pipes.
Just, if I could just step, step...
Want me to go back?
On a, on a fully interactive G I S, I wouldn't be able to see that if that were Milford. But you'd be able to click on one of those items, and click on a manhole, and it would give you information about that manhole. Click on a catch basin, and it would give you dropdown attribute data about that manhole. Right now, there's information basically in paper files, in both the Sewer Department and the Water Department, about each element of their system, whether it's a valve or a manhole or whatever. And that would be part of the data conversion that would get added to the maps. But the initial geographic part of it is, as Beth was explaining, it can be gleaned from, A, the orthophotos that are going to be flown, and B, from the, the utility maps themselves. So, you combine those two and then add all those attribute data points. You can click on a point and find out stuff, other than just seeing where it is. I mean, we can actually know things about it that way.
Right, but Larry, somebody would have to go through all the paper versions in order to get it into the G I S system.
Right, right, and that's...
Can I jump in for a second?
Yeah.
That, that is correct, and so I brought an example of what we've been doing on the stormwater project, just to illustrate the point. So, the green dots are structures that were field-located with a GPS unit. So, those are catch basins, drainage manhole covers, retention basins, anything like that. The purple, red dots are structures that were located from record drawing plans and need to still be field-verified. Two months ago, this map was empty, except for the outfalls. We had the outfalls map, but we had no...
We had the outfalls map, but we had no drainage structures going to the outfalls. Now, we have over four thousand structures in town, GPS-located, and that's the first step. So, then the second step will be to establish the connectivity between the different catch basins and manholes and retention basins, and go in and, and set up the database of the attributes. So, what type of pipe, what size pipe, what direction is it flowing, all of that information, what kind of condition is the manhole in, is it block or is it pre-cast? All of that information that then can be used to do your five-year maintenance plan or your capital plan. Also, a more advanced GIS option that I have seen that works very well, we're not, we're not close enough yet, but hopefully someday we will be, we can take a subarea of this once we have all the information on the manholes, and we can query the shape files and we can say, "How many manholes are in this subarea? How many concrete manholes are in this subarea? How much, how much cast iron pipe is in this subarea? How much reinforced concrete pipe?" And then, again, you can use that for your operations and maintenance plans. So, that's really our, our hope going forward with this GIS, is to use that for the stormwater system, the sewer system, and the water system.
Yeah, and it, yeah, no, that's great. I mean, and I was going to point out, too, in addition to being able to, yeah, and as Larry said, point to, say, a catch basin and find out the information associated with it. What you're seeing more and more is something like, one term you could use is electronic file cabinet. So, you can go to the map, hit an area, and then find all of the scanned documents that are associated with that location in the map. So, you're basically taking your scanned documents, like, say, water connection cards, and giving them a geographic location. And that's, that's really useful. And not that hard to do.
Directly to the system that the building official's already, already using for building permit data. That's already being scanned and there's a database there that will be ready to connect with, with the GIS, so...
Yeah, you, that's, no, that's another great point. I mean, it's, you know, as time goes on, everything gets easier, and one of the things that get, that's gotten easier is to mix and match. So, for instance, Milford's current website, which is a parcel-driven website, has been married to the Patriot Property System. So, you can go from a piece of property on the GIS map to the property record card that the assessor is seeing in her office. And so, I, I brought that up because Larry pointed out, Municity is another example of an existing piece of software in use in the town that should well be able to be married with this website. And just, that's just another example. I think that's the town of Southbridge, water system. And I just wanted to close with a couple of anecdotes. This might characterize the problem or the benefits better. I think in the course of the interviews, you know, I could, this could be a list of, you know, a hundred things, but I picked a couple. The first, the fire department and the hydrant data, that's an example. It's honestly, it's almost quaint in a way. The fire department said, "Gee, we wish we had hydrant data. I wish I could bring up a map and see where my hydrants are." That's what Chief Tuohy said. When I was at the Milford Water Department, their consultant said, "Well, I, you know, we have hydrants. They've been GPS, we have hydrant data." And, oh, and I sent that and delivered it to the fire department. Well, I mean, the fire department doesn't know what to do with it, may not even recognize what it is when it comes in the door. But, I mean, there's a situation where you have, you know, a, a simple piece of data that's in GIS format, sitting at the Milford Water Department. You have, you know, a website already up and running, which is a platform to deliver that data, and you just put the two together, it'd be very, very easy. You know, another example that was brought up there, this is a more sophisticated example, but it's completely, completely doable. They, you know, they expressed the need to be able to, you know, on scene, on the spot, be able to develop a plume, say, for instance, a contamination plume, and be able to see that on the map so they know what properties or structures are affected or might be affected. The police department, this is just a trivial example, but Chief Olafland mentioned managing traffic signs, traffic sign data. But the information that he manages about those signs does not include a location, other than, you know, the intersection of the street and that street. And so, it would be, you know, a pretty easy task to take his database and marry it to the features that will come off of the ortho imagery, the flyover, and thereby give that database, you know, location and make it possible to see the traffic signs on a map, precisely located with the information that is associated with them. Also, when I, you know, when we were here those three days, it was not long after an incident had taken place at one of the quarries, both the police department and the fire department started off, I think they both started off with this same, you know, need or request, which was to, to know more about where to access remote properties and where trails and, and other things might be on remote properties. And again, that's something that, you know, a lot of the information will be developed by the, developed by the GIS base map. A lot of that will come off of the aerial interpretation. The building department, this is a, a great example. One of the things that he mentioned was being able to see allowable building areas. And while for allowable building areas, you already have parcel lines in existence with pretty good accuracy. You have zoning information, information on setbacks, and the two of those with a GIS person, you know, as Larry says, chained to the GIS workstation, could readily do that analysis and come up with that data set for the building department. It would not be a hard thing to do. The highway department, the highway surveyor is like the poster child for GIS needs in Milford, because virtually, virtually everything that he does would, you know, play right into the examples that you gave, Vani, and, I mean, it's just, he, he is the poster child. He's, everything he does, all his operations and maintenance can be tied to GIS data. I just put one example out there because I know that's a big part of his budget, salt and sand. So, he said he's trying to, to balance the cost, the high cost of the salt versus the high cost of disposing of the sand. And if he has street data, he has, he therefore has the mileage, you know, and he can, he worked that out. So, that's, those are just a few. Like I said, the list was long, and at the end of the report, you'll see the list of the needs from the various departments, you know, elaborated on. So, the last slide, costs. We put, we put the costs into phases, originally, and they actually still exist in phases at the current time. And I just wanted to point out that there are a number of costs that are really very modest, but could give you quick return, that could be acted on immediately if you, if you had, you know, the capability to do that now, without having to buy hardware, without having to hire somebody, without having to train any of your staff. There are things that are sitting there that can be taken advantage of and just accomplished. So, that's a little bright note. And anyway, that's, that's all I had. I'd be more than happy to answer questions because I know I did kind of buzz through kind of quickly, and I think Larry also had more to say about the budget.
Yeah, let's go to any questions from the board members, okay? Brian?
Okay. Let me get the glaze off my eyes. Yeah, this is, you know, remarkable when you look at this piece of paper and you see those four thousand little green-purple dots. You know, it's, it is, you know, amazing that that exists in the town right now. I guess what impressed me the most about the paperwork that you sent, and you touched on it, was all the different departments and the needs that are unmet in the departments and the uses that the departments would have. Let me ask you this, and you touched on it with the assessor's office, for example. You know, it says here that their parcel map maintenance is already outsourced. So, would this be something that would supersede that, or like you say, would be married to the Patriot Properties?
Yeah, it already is married to, and it's already, well, I guess I'm not quite sure I understand your question, but yeah, it is...
I mean, if, if we were, you know, to go into this full GIS system, are there costs, services, products that the assessor's office, for example, would not have to use because we would have this? Or is this something that would supplement what they do have?
It would supplement what they do have. I mean, there's, you know, an example, a, a small example would be, you know, producing neighborhood maps that are, I think, are required every so often. Right now, that's an example of something that she hires somebody to do every time she needs it, and it's a one-off, you know, delivery to her. Next year, she goes and hires them again. That is information that is inherently, inherently falls out of property data. So, if you went to the effort to code all of your pieces of property with a neighborhood code, then you would only do that once, and you'd just hit the button and reproduce that map anytime you want.
Now, is that something, for example, just stay on that task, is that something that the GIS person would do, or is that something that a staff person in the assessor's office would have to do?
That's something that, I picture that as something that the GIS person would do.
Okay, all right.
Yeah.
You know, because I went through these, these department needs, and I think you touched on it, they all seem to talk about having the mobile ability, you know, to access information in the field, which I thought was impressive. But then, when you look at some of the capabilities, for example, you know, the Board of Health talking about capturing locations of private wells, irrigation wells, mapping, recycling participation, mapping cancer clusters, which is something I didn't even imagine, didn't even think of. You know, the fire department, you know, you touched on that in terms of the hydrants. The highway department, this is a long section, you know, there's a lot of things, a lot of things there. So, I mean, it's unquestionable to me that, you know, this would serve, you know, a great need for the town and certainly improve the information that we have as a community and, as an extension, improve the ability that we have to, to serve the citizens and other people who might want to, you know, do business or have information about the town. So, I, I guess my, my next question is, and I don't know if that's so much for you or for our department people, you know, I looked at this sheet here, this doesn't have a whole lot of meaning to me in terms of what we're looking at financially to get this thing to go, you know, what money is needed, for what part of the project, when? You know, so I, you know, I, you know, I don't know exactly if I get that from this two-page grid that, that, you know, ends up with four hundred and seventy-nine thousand and seven hundred and twenty-four thousand.
Yeah, I think we've, we've gone through different, or Larry, you might want to address that, but there are a couple of permutations that we've gone through, based on, based on funding.
Yeah, we had looked, as I said earlier, the report was in progress, and the finance committee contacted me, had wanted, wanted numbers. Well, they hadn't quite gotten to the numbers at that point, so they stopped the report in the writing and focused on the math. So, we ended up with that spreadsheet that categorized the items first and then assigned an estimated high and low figure. So, to try and respond to the FinCom, I had suggested a phased approach to try to fund it, and working with Zach, to get an idea of, of a way to, to do that and, and have it be, you know, as, as least disruptive to the budget as possible, and had come up with a suggestion of two hundred and fifty thousand this special town meeting, because you have Article, what is it, Article eighteen, I think, is your, is your funding article for the full GIS. So, do two fifty now, do two hundred thousand at the annual, and that would start funding a position after July one, and then finish the rest of it off in, in a special or another annual for another, I think it was a hundred and fifty thousand. But at any rate, the finance committee sounds more like they would just as soon pass over it this time altogether. So, we can talk about that now or at the end, if you want to wait and get into that.
Well, I, I, I mean, I'm trying to get a sense as to what makes the most sense from a policy point of view and, and an implementation point of view, so, I mean...
Well, to the extent that there's a, a number of things that can all be accomplished at the same time, because different people will be doing them in terms of having the consulting firm put these things together, the only thing that would be lagging slightly is getting the rest of the aerial photography. And they were only able to fly the north half of the town because the weather didn't cooperate. So, that's why we're looking at a spray flyer.
Okay, so you, you mentioned two hundred and fifty thousand, you know, what would that two hundred and fifty thousand dollars translate into for, you know, either, for either services or product?
Well, let me...
You know what I'm saying? Where does that take us in this process? Okay.
Thank you. Larry, has the finance committee seen this sheet, this information?
Not this one, no. We developed this...
Do you have any, do you have any from the press table, too, so they can follow along?
So, by, by category, the categories in these three comparisons correspond to the categories that were in the major spreadsheet. And obviously, the individual items, there are multiple individual items, for example, for the application development or data enhancement, for example. But to roughly equate to the original suggestion to the FinCom, approach A was to phase it out, as I just explained, and except for my math error on the third column, which is really seventy-three thousand total, not a hundred and three, this roughly comes out to the same grouping that I had suggested to the FinCom, which is two fifty at this special town meeting, and that would get us a pretty good chunk of hardware, software, data enhancement, application development. The only, the only odd thing about that is the staffing, which at that stage would have to be an outsourced person because there's nobody there to do it.
So, it would be hiring a consultant to...
It would be having FGO...
Implement this step of the program?
Right, it would be having FGO provide whatever the staffing was for six or seven months. Outsource onsite technical support three days a week for seven months was eighty-five. So...
Is that line five point one point two? Is that what you just looked at?
Sorry, I was looking at the other end. Yes.
Okay.
So, again, to, to coincide with roughly what I'd suggested to the FinCom in the first place, this would get the town's biggest bang for its buck, kind of make sure that we get enough going that we'll actually have a system in place and start putting things together, then follow up at the annual town meeting for the balance of, of those items. So, the only thing to finish off would be seventy-three thousand for a few items, to finish up data enhancement, a lot of that. I'd have to go back and look at my other notes, but for example, a big dollar item was a conversion of the water company data, depending upon how much there is to do and... depending upon how much there is to do and what form it's really in. And then going out from there, you would have the annual operational costs and the staffing costs occurring in the budget, not as article money.
Where would this be located? You know what I mean? Is this, is it going to be like a GIS office or something?
Well, it would be a physical, physical desk in planning and engineering, I'm assuming.
I don't know, I'm just trying to figure it out.
But the access to data, once it's put together, would be via the internet the way it is now, among the various departments.
But I mean, you know, if you're talking about, you know, a staff person and, you know, best materials, that would be in your office?
Yes.
Okay.
Going to be tight, all right?
We'll make do.
Well, Reno, Reno will have to share his desk or something. But at any rate.
All right, well, this gives me a better sense as to, you know, what you're trying to look to do in terms of implementation.
Yeah, and in response then, because this was done, obviously, after I'd gone to the FinCom last week, then their request or hope that you'd pass over the article altogether this town meeting would get you into a phased approach B, which would mean you take everything that you would have done this month and push it into the annual. But if you do that, it would seem to make more sense just to drop down to the last one and do it once. Just do it one and done at the annual. And that would cover all of the data acquisition, the application development, hardware, software licenses, funding a position. We, between now and then, have to develop a job description, obviously, and then put together that, that whole scenario. But, you know, it's, obviously, it's the board's article. So if you, if you want to proceed, you have a variety of, you know, funding options to do it. Obviously, your motion could be for four hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. But given the concerns of the finance committee, I wasn't sure you necessarily want to do that. But if you did, that would, that would be a logical dollar amount now too. But if you wanted to pass over, then just do it once, once in the annual. And again, these are, these are based on estimates from what we and the consultants have been able to determine exists out there. And the expenses involved in correlating some of the existing data with the new geographic base.
Okay, I got a good sense of it, thank you.
Before we get to Bill, Larry, when you said two forty-eight, right? Ma'am, what is your name again?
Beth, Lando.
Beth, I'm sorry. Would the two forty-eight include the flyover or no?
No, the flyover is already paid for. We had to join the consortium last year. So among monies from highway department, from the industrial development commission, and monies that I had in my departmental budget, we were able to buy into that consortium and get the aerial photography for about a third of the cost that it would have been otherwise.
Yeah, and then the next step would be to take that product and develop a base map, a GIS base map from it.
Geez, I'm not sure where to go first. Beth, thank you for your presentation. It helped me a great deal understand more about what the current state of affairs is, where we were at various departments. And given that state of affairs today, and there's a variety of things there, right? There's the hardware, the software, the personnel. There's also what I would characterize as a variety of skills that exist within the various departments in order to be able to integrate and do something useful with the data. I think there's folks that would like to have more but aren't currently processing the information they have and could be capable of doing that. So I think that helps. I want to separate the information you provided and what we contracted you for, because that's been enormously helpful. I want to separate that from the rest of my discussion because the rest of my discussion goes into appropriate planning process. And so I don't know whether to have that at a different meeting, to have that now. I don't know if we want to confuse, and I'll leave it to the town administrator or to the chair. If this is the, if this is the discussion point and this is how we plan, I'm happy to have that discussion. Or we can digest the information that we've received from the consultant. I feel it would be more appropriate.
Right.
Because I've got a whole lot to say to the engineering and planning department about how this was, how this was planned. I'm more than a little disappointed with the information that's been socialized to the FinCom. Larry, you were called in because there was an article put on the warrant that had not been seen before. The first part of it was the consultant information. But to be sure, there'll be no one and done. The town couldn't even process everything that came through. So I'll leave it at that. I think, I think there's an appropriate piece for the town administrator to be looking into. We talked about some soft costs in other departments that may go away where consultants are used. I'd like a better understanding of that in terms of, you know. I don't want to get into return on investment discussions. What I want to get into is discussions about what costs go away that we can move. What line items won't be in budgets once we have GIS mapping fully implemented? I think there's a fairly detailed analysis that needs to be done to understand that. I'd also like to understand what, from a personnel standpoint, there's a, there's a, there's a long-term cost for personnel. I want to make sure that you understand and agree with the numbers, what a fully burdened employee is with hardware, with software, with personnel, with benefits and pension. And we've talked about that in the past, right? Because people have come with proposals for projects and the personnel costs aren't fully understood. And I know you get what I mean. Yeah, this was socialized. I have to tell you, as a matter of process, this was socialized, not in a way that I would have done and not in a way I would have rolled out. But I want to, it's important for me to separate the feedback I've given you with respect to, you gave us exactly what we needed from a consultant standpoint, from the way a municipality should budget and plan and put thoughtful planning in place. We can throw a lot of hardware at the, at the fire department. We can throw a lot of software at people. And I'm afraid, and I've seen it done in the past, it's not unique to municipalities. I've seen it done in private sector as well, where you do all that and three years later, there's a lot of obsolete equipment. And I'll venture a guess that you may have seen some of it.
Well, I, just with the regard to the hardware and software example in particular, you're talking about one piece of hardware and one software installation in one location. So we're not talking about buying, you know, a Sun microstation for the fire department and.
I got you, but even, but even at the standpoint of handheld devices and the ability to map, pull up data, what type of devices those are going to look like.
Yeah, those are just iPad, you know, I mean, they're just typical devices.
I understand, I understand. But there's also, and that's the other piece I was going to get to. And it's not, actually, I don't question any of your data. It's our planning process to see how we implement. We've got a, just as a, October twentieth, we've got a town, town meeting article. It still says TBD. And I don't see a strategy that helps me understand. I see three different flavors of budget, two being exactly the same dollar value, one being about a hundred and fifteen K, thousand dollars less, the middle one. And I'm not sure from a feature set, or feature or capability standpoint, what would be the difference between any of them because we've not had a chance to really go through and digest and do justice to what you've just presented and what's here. You know, was, I think, a week and a half ago, I received fifty pages worth of data that was, was already out there being discussed and with the, with the FinCom. So different discussion, different time. I'll take that up at a different time. I think you get an understanding. And the question I also have is the IT, IT director had an opportunity to look at number of mobile devices, how to support those.
He met originally, I believe, with Beth and I forget the other names.
Does he have an ongoing support plan that you've had a chance to look at, Zach?
Not yet.
All right, so there's some fundamental questions that we need to get into. I'm not questioning at all our need to be GIS, fully GIS capable, at some point where we put a stake in the future. Now, I just don't know if that's five years down the road, four years down the road, three years down the road. I want to do it in a way that makes sense. That's what our planning process is supposed to do. And vetting this through the, through the various departments is a great way to do that for starters. So that's some feedback. We can get into more, I can give you feedback on the side later.
It's just one side comment. It certainly would be pretty easy to bullet for this group or any other group that's interested, the sort of what I would call low-hanging fruit, which are the items that I, you know, we perceive as the biggest, quickest payback for the smallest upfront investment. And I don't know if that would be helpful, but that would.
It would.
Whittle down, you have a list of, you know.
Yeah, more information is better.
Pages of items. But that would focus your attention on the items that we'd recommend you tackle right away versus the items that you'd.
You know, one of the things we have to balance, obviously, and you understand this, when, when we come up with unplanned projects, and I say unplanned, there hasn't been any dollar value associated with any GIS project on any capital or otherwise, you know, plan otherwise. When we talk about doing something very quick, what we're saying is to everybody else who's planned and thoughtful over the past five years, this is more important than yours. This low-hanging fruit is more important than your low-hanging fruit. So I want to be cautious. We're trying to run a town and I know you get that. And so I again want to thank you for everything you provided. I think you gave us exactly what we contracted, exactly what we needed to know. Now it's a question about how we digest this, how we get it back out there and how we realize the benefits over, over time, I think. That's just my thoughts, Mr. Jim.
Yeah, no, thank you. No, I think that, you know, I think, first of all, I thank Varney and Larry for all the information. We've been talking about this now for probably, what, eight months? Different information, we've slacked off at different times and all that. Personally, I wanted, you were about to come in tonight with Larry and Varney to give us more information. You know, there's a lot of information. As a matter of fact, the packet I just gave, my packet to Bill, I'll get another packet from, from Larry. There's a lot of information. I think it's important, I think it's important that the town have this at some point. I think it's also important that the finance committee be comfortable with what they're doing going forward. I think you're going to the FinCom on Wednesday, right, Larry, Varney?
That's correct.
And is Beth going too? I don't know, but I'm just asking. I know the FinCom at one meeting, I think my chairman Shane presented, it was a while ago, you presented information, I think he wanted to expedite the process to go faster. That was several months ago.
That was for last town meeting, yeah.
I've also talked, and I won't mention the communities, I've also talked to a couple of communities, probably thirty, forty miles away. And the way they did it was over time, two or three years, in a planned approach, and it worked out well for both communities. I think, you know, we all, I think we all agree, most people agree that, you know, we need this, we need this. The department heads, it would be a great benefit for them. It would also be a great benefit for a resident who wants to come in and ascertain information regarding their street, whatever the case may be. In my own situation here, yeah, I mean, going for the whole ball of wax of four fifty-four, I don't know if we could do that. I don't think that would be, I think that's kind of scary, that type of number. I think we should continue to work, get the information that we talked about tonight, the information that we need, maybe some different scenarios. Work closely with the FinCom because I think it's important to, to work closely with them, the affordability, when we're going to do it. I would, if I had my own preference right now, I would say, let's do the due diligence, continue to get the information, clarify any ambiguities, and, you know, present it for next, the annual town meeting.
Chief, can I?
Yeah, one second, Brian. And, because I, you know, I have some other questions. I have a lot of questions that I don't really want to ask tonight. I want to, you know, get, obtain the information from you at a later date. But there's no question, I think this is good for the town in Milford. A lot of progressive communities have adopted this. Beth has stated, Varney has stated that we already have a lot of information. So I think it's not like, you know, starting the race at the gate. I think we've got a quarter, quarter into the race, halfway into the race. But people have to be questioned, have to be comfortable. I think there would be a lot, a lot, a lot of questions at town meeting. You know, so we have to have the answers to those things. And everyone has to be comfortable. And I think at this point, I'm not sure all the necessary boards will have to approve it, including, well, our board, our meeting is really comfortable at this point, you know? Brian?
You know, I guess what I'd like to see is, you know, the continued incremental process, progress that we've been making in this.
Yep.
And, you know, through all the discussions, you know, I didn't see anybody reference, but, you know, this goes back all the way to two thousand and six. We get funding at the town meeting in October two thousand and six to do GIS mapping of the conservation lands so that we could put it in the part of the open space map. So, you know, this is nothing new. This is nothing that, you know, we haven't been told about, that we haven't looked forward to. We came forward with a very comprehensive memo back in January talking about continued progress in this regard. We went forward at the annual town meeting, got appropriation to do this study. This gives us additional information. So, you know, I see incremental progress in this regard. And there's no question, if you, you know, want to join the 21st century, you have to have this, particularly with what we are looking at with the stormwater regulations along with Franklin and Bellingham, if for no other reason. So, you know, to me, I, I think it's very important and in line with what I think my colleagues are saying. You know, I think, you know, I think what you referenced would certainly be helpful, but something along these lines, you know, to see what incremental movements we can make, even with this article coming forward, you know? It doesn't have to be a crazy number, but I mean, you know, whatever, you know, progress can be made initially, that's, that's what I'd like to see with, with continued progress to this. Because I take it that, you know, if this is an eventual goal that the town wants to realize, the cost isn't going to go down. So, I mean, whatever progress we can make towards that, I think, I think would be helpful. So I think some of the things that were detailed, I think would be good. You know, I really think that, that you need to make this presentation to the finance committee Wednesday night because I think there's a large level of misunderstanding and, and, and lack of knowledge. I mean, that's what I had too, you know, as to exactly what this is. And I think the itemization of how our town departments can utilize this information is very impressive. So, I mean, that's, that would be my suggestion. I really think that you need to go forward. I mean, even if they, you know, don't want to support the article, well, they ought to have this information so at least they're making a knowing and intelligent decision. I mean, otherwise, I don't know how you do that. Oh, GIS, I don't know what that is, but I don't like it. Well, you know what I mean? So I really think that you need to go forward if for no other reasons but educational and to lay the groundwork for, for future progress.
The, yeah, I mean, I, last week, at the FinCom meeting, I asked the administrator to have Larry bring in the, you know, bring in the consultant because there's more information, more information is more important. And I was hoping that you would be going to the FinCom meeting on Wednesday if, you know, if the chairman allows it. But I just think that.
Where'd it happen, yeah?
Information is important and putting everything together, not rushing it, doing it right so that people can understand it and do it over a, you know, orderly schedule or whatever. Bill?
No, I agree with everything that's been said. I think it's been ad hoc since oh six, and I think we've had, you know, point solutions to get us there. But I, what we haven't seen yet is a plan, and it has to be planned that has taken more than a couple of weeks to put together and needs to be run through the process of the various skills that we have on board, whether it be technology and IT, whether it be the town accountant, whether it be the town treasurer, whether it be, you know. So I agree with everything that's been said. I just wouldn't set expectations with the FinCon. And I'd request actually, as on a personal level, the other board members can outvote me, it's a democracy. I would reset your expectations and, because timing is everything. I would reset your expectations not to have consultant come forward to look for anything but to educate FinCon and others. Anybody who may be watching and any other department heads that are there, but not with an expectation to go forward with an article. Because I'd like to see more, and I'd like to see different options, and I can go over those with Town Administrator. We need to do better planning.
Can I?
Go ahead.
Just one last thought, well, two thoughts. One, a couple of times, two thousand and six was referenced, and I just, I think it's worth pointing out that what, that work that was done in two thousand and six was a one-off product. So the town paid to have something developed, and yes, it was, it was developed using GIS technology, but there was no GIS technology that resulted in coming to the town. It was just a one-off purchase of a service. So this is a different, I think, two thousand and eleven is really your starting point of bringing GIS technology into the town. And so my second point, just to sort of characterize what you're looking at, I wouldn't, I don't picture this as a situation where you're blasting GIS technology out to the town. Today you don't have it, and next week we're going to have GIS technology with hardware and software and training. I would characterize it more by stepping back to two thousand and eleven. So despite the town even realizing GIS technology is now in use. Your citizens are using it, your staff is using it, albeit not to the extent that many other municipalities are. But it's the kind of thing that it's like word processing, you just start using it. And, you know, there are parts of the plan that have larger price tags that you want to, you know, tackle as you get deeper into it. But I think initially, it's, you know, bringing the technology into the town is kind of a nice, easy, you know, sort of, like I said, low hanging fruit type thing.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Beth, thank you. Larry, thank you. Vani, thank you. So, Wednesday night, talk to Chairman Shane, exactly what, but I think having Beth present the information that was presented here, I think will help. And then go from there. Okay? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, go to the Town Administrator's report. Rick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to report that the work on the correctly problem of the Main Street lights not functioning has been completed. Concrete sidewalk on Main Street near Middle School East was removed above the broken PVC pipe. The pipe was repaired, wiring was supplied, conductors for lighting and plug circuits were installed. We are going to be looking to try to test new LED lights for these poles to see if we can use those. I am told by Carlos, our Senior Custodian, that we now just have one light out on Main Street. So it was a wiring issue. It seems to have been confirmed, and so that is good news. If you've noticed, the Highway Department has completed redoing one of the crosswalks on Main Street with the stamped asphalt. As I explained prior, it's a raised walkway which gives the appearance of a brick walkway, much more visible to pedestrians, much more aesthetic to the town. And they will continue to redo the remaining crosswalks. Just a quick update on the downtown decorations. The wreaths, banners, flags, brackets have all been ordered. There's an issue with having the flags installed and banners for Veterans Day. Attached to my report, you saw Fire Chief William Toohey has informed me the department received a military five-ton chassis through the Department of Defense Federal Fighting Program in conjunction with the Mass Department of Conservation and Recreation. This was at no cost to the town. It's a nineteen ninety-three vehicle with ten thousand miles, which replaced a nineteen eighty chassis. This vehicle is used to carry water into the woods to supply the brush truck. You can see a kind of a before and after picture, I think, that I provided to you. You can see they have high ground clearance reliability and ability to carry a great deal of weight over rough terrain. They will transfer the existing tanks to the new chassis and have it in service early next year. All work will be done in-house at no cost to the town, and so that we see this as a, we see this as a plus. One last thing, it's not on the report I gave you. Just Thursday, I participated in a conference call with representatives from DPH regarding the medical marijuana facility to come into Milford. I am told the online registration certification program has been launched. It's a web-based system which will allow physicians to certify patients, dispensaries to look up patients who are certified, and law enforcement to confirm patients and the amount of product a patient can purchase. DPH is now in the inspection phase of the program. All applicants must file documents for architectural review. I reached out to the Council for Milford Medicinals, which is the entity that will be coming into Milford. They have filed their documents for architectural review. They're awaiting DPH comments. Once that is done, a site visit will be scheduled. They still believe an anticipated facility opening date of April first, two thousand and fifteen is possible. So, and that's all I have for Mr. Chairman.
Brian, any questions for Rick?
No, the crosswalks look nice. I know some other communities, I guess, are doing that. I don't know, maybe there's some grant programs, something out there. Maybe they're all got a deal on the brick walkway. But, yeah, it's certainly an improvement and it's, yeah, it's a nice job for Main Street. Looks good. Does look nice.
Dan, Bill?
Yeah, I think, you know, as we've said many, many times as a board and the different committees that come before us, you know, the state of Main Street didn't get that way in a week or a day. And I think the small incremental improvements, I think what Scott's doing does look good. I agree with Selectman Murray that does look good and I'm encouraged at the speed at which the Downtown Decorations Committee has moved with things being ready for the Veterans Day. I'm looking forward to that.
Yeah, we certainly want to thank the committee for all their work, and that'll certainly be very nice. And I think it'll be great for, as we approach the holidays, Christmas, and the Christmas parade for the children and all that. Okay, at this time, we'll go to, Zach, want to come up? Paul? Come up.
He's got it.
Don't want to come up, huh?
Not right now.
Irene, Irene, why don't you come up? Irene, why don't you come up? Part of the team, come on. Okay, at this time, we're going to have an explanation from Zach, the financial team. The financial team is made up of town accountant, town treasurer, town council, town administrator, and the financial analyst. They prepared a very detailed report for us and for the FinCon. So at this time, Zach is going to go over the information in the report. Zach?
You know, if you don't mind, thank you for having us. And if you don't mind, I'd like to take us through a bit of a timeline, the process of how
Sure.
we got to this position today.
Sure.
And then we can go through the report a little more diligently.
Take your time. This is important.
Okay, great. So we start the budget process around February, and it's not just for the operational budget. It's for the revenue source, as well as the expenditures, as well as capital needs. And that's where we rarely try to identify what our goals and objectives are, as I like to call them. And at that time, we like to try to put a minimum of one million dollars aside for capital needs. We like to put a minimum of one million aside for stabilization. And we also, this year, wanted to earmark a minimum of one point four million for taxpayer relief. So at that time, we start jumping into the operational budget. We're working our revenue sources. We're coming up with estimated local receipts. We're looking, following the state to see what state aids coming in. And then through the magic of Prop two and a half, that one's pretty easy to predict, two and a half percent over what it could have been last year, plus new growth, which is kind of the unknown factor at the time. So we present a balanced budget. I'm sure you're very familiar with the sheets. Stabodonsa puts them together every year. We work very closely together to iron out the figures. And that particular document has been well-known to Milford and utilized year after year. So at that point, we get into the annual town meeting that takes place in May. So also, just to step back a little bit, when we're doing that planning, we're really talking the raise and appropriate section. And we like to, we can't count on free cash. It's one of them sources that we can never count on. If we actually have some, that's good. We'll utilize it and make decisions at a later point. So we get to the annual town meeting, and the operating budget is set. I passed at eighty-seven, seven million. At that point, our revenues are getting a little more tweaked. We also appropriated one hundred and twenty-five thousand for a highway project that came from raising appropriate. And I think the big one, as we all know, was the approval of five point one million for the Milford Youth Center, of which town meeting approved four million dollars as authorized bonding. So at that time, we probably could have put in a little more if we wanted to from reason appropriate, but we decided, you know what, let's hold off, let's play it safe. We'll wait for October to come around, get a better picture of what kind of revenues we actually have, have a better picture of what free cash we may or may not have. And at that time, a fourth goal, in my opinion, was set to say, all right, we'll take a look at the youth center again and try to do what we can to rescind some debt and eliminate any interest in the future, whatnot. Six thirty comes and goes, fiscal year end. So when I jump into working crazy hours, doing my thing to tie out the bank statements with Irene, working with the different departments to tie out the receivables, working with Irene again to tie out debt, combining the balance sheet, a lot of work. Get it, submit it into the DOR. At that time, once it's approved, then I do the free cash calculation. That brings us to three point eight million this year. Huge number, biggest since I've been here, and pretty sure the biggest the town has ever seen. So we got real lucky there with that situation. Like to try to call it recycled cash. But what really had happened was the, our revenues came in a lot higher than what our expenditures were. So hence, three point eight million certified a couple of weeks ago. So that brings us up to where we are right now. So prior, like any budget, we're working off estimates. As we evolve, we change those numbers. So at this point, the state is set with their figure. That number's solid. I'm committed to the figure that I'm going to use for local receipts, right around six point nine million. And as described, we know what the levy can be, plus new growth we ended up tweaking. At the time, we had four hundred thousand, and working with Priscilla, the assessor, it's going to be more like a minimum of what we're hearing of seven hundred thousand. So that's where, if we go back to the documents now, you keep hearing maybe on the radio that we have roughly four point nine million in available levy capacity. That's where that figure comes into play. Again, we set our revenue, we subtract out our operating budget. We have our earmarked goals and objectives, and to meet them is roughly five million dollars available on top of three point eight million in free cash. So next process is the warrant opens up. People start putting in their requests, including the objectives that we described earlier. Stabilization, wanted at least a minimum of one million. If you look at the chart, what we're trying to do here is actually closer to one point five million. Again, speeding off of a pleasant surprise of some real good money coming in for free cash. Another objective we really wanted to look at was where we actually stand on able to rescinding some money by, for the Milford Youth Center by actually appropriating some funds. Three point eight helped out huge from free cash with the ability to put three million dollars down. Now, if you notice, even with all this that I'm explaining, we're still projected of one point four carrying forward in free cash that could be used for the May meeting. Now, someone might be thinking, all right, there's one million dollars left for outstanding bonds to be authorized. Why not just clear it? So that would be a further, if there's three million passes, that would be a further objection for the, for the future meeting. Reason we don't want to do it right now is, as you heard from Vani earlier.
You don't know what you don't know.
You don't know what you don't know. So it'd be a lot easier. There's certain restrictions. If we put that money in there, you can't get it out of there too easily. So why not just wait? We can easily be working off the money, if this passes, the money that's appropriated. And if we're in a good situation, again, in May, it's certainly an option and definitely a goal. So again, I'll work right back through the goals and objectives. So on this chart right here, one of the articles sponsored by the Finance Committee is stabilization. Now, if you recall, at the annual, we also appropriated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars from free cash for stabilization. So one of the main reasons why we're having such an aggressive approach is we got the woodland school project on board. And more or less, by definition of what a stabilization account is, is meant to stabilize debt. So right now, we're around thirteen point seven million. It's a fantastic figure. And we're still taking an aggressive approach towards more or less savings. So if you all remember, when we did the woodland analysis, we actually did a projection on what the stabilization impact would be by keeping the debt services at three point five million and kind of feeding off a stabilization to make up any difference. And what we had as a projection, and maybe Paul can double check me on this, was a minimum of five hundred thousand per year. Past few years, we've had much more of an aggressive approach, and that's basically because we've had the available sources such as free cash, where we could do that. So in my opinion, we're ahead of schedule there, also doing great planning and can utilize that and just in a good position to continue to put money aside there. A number of articles had come in, as you see. The chart, I believe you have in front of you, was prior to a couple of the Finance Committee meetings that were conducted last week, where they rarely got into the merit of the projects, got certain department heads either to shave down their articles a little bit, got certain people to pass over. So it has been updated with the major difference ending up in stabilization at this point. Now, as we just heard from Larry and Vani and the engineer that was just in here, or the consultant, I should say, that also seems that it's not set in stone yet either. So there's certain articles that are on there that have not been voted on by Finance Committee. However, it's our responsibility at the time when they're presented to us to find appropriate funding source for them while still meeting the goals and objections that we set for ourselves. So the document you have in front of yourself clearly displays that we can do that. And going forward, we'll see what happens at Finance Committee and see how the voters vote. But that's, that's the plan that we laid out to meet our goals.
So we have money. Thank you, Zach. A great job. Thank you, Paul. Appreciate all the work that you do providing information to the FinCon. I've always said that your position should be full-time. I know you don't want to go full-time, but you provide tremendous information and knowledge to, as an assistance to
It does.
the town accountant and everyone else. So thank you, Paul. It has to be stated, because I think a lot of times, let's just say that you could be thanked more often. So on this sheet, and this was a sheet with deliberation among people that I mentioned before.
Correct.
Stabilization thirteen point seven, that doesn't include the one four that we're recommending for
It does not.
Okay. And also recommending one four to offset the tax rate. And this, I think, was a goal that we talked about probably over a year ago to have
That's correct. And if you notice, it's small amounts, but we're actually over that goal by around two point five thousand. And as I mentioned before, that as I mentioned before, that, um, one of the estimates that is not written in stone yet is new growth. So, we still favored on the side of being conservative, where we kinda tipped off, it's gonna be a minimum of seven. Anything above that, which could easily be a hundred thousand, would also end up into that excess levy capacity and taxpayer relief.
Yeah, so we have seven-hundred thousand, always being conservative. We're also offsetting the, uh, the youth center, which makes sense, okay, because it's always better to pay something off than have it on a credit card or whatever.
Yeah.
And by doing all this, I'm not saying all these articles are gonna go forward, there might be some tweaking, there might be some reductions or whatever the case may be. But if we did all this, we would still have next year, free cash about one-point-four million dollars.
Correct, for the annual town meeting, correct. Or any potential town meetings in between.
Sure. Okay, at this time, um, I wanted to have a good discussion among the board members. So, we'll, um, go to Brian first for any questions or statements, and then we can go to Bill.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and let me echo, uh, the thanks to Zach, and also to Paul, um, Rick, and, uh, Town Council, along with myself and, and Mark Shane, had a chance to sit in at this meeting, and, um, you know, you do a great job, you know, it's a lot of hard work, it's a lot of technical work, but you're very dedicated, and it, it, it really shows with your, with your command of the numbers, and, um, the town is very fortunate to have you in the positions that you're in, to give the expertise. And, uh, make no mistake about it, you are no small reason as to why the town is in the position that it is in. So, you, you've done a great job. You know, I think the plan that's put forward, and as you said, you know, there, you know, there, there could be some adjustments, you know, after meeting with the Finance Committee, but, you know, generally, and, and I know Phil Shear-McColly on the FinCon always talks about this, I think you've got excellent balance here. Your funding, some needs for the town that are targeted. You're paying down debt, which makes great financial sense. You're putting money in the savings account for, you know, the, the eventual woodland school payments primarily, which will be large, but also for whatever else might come up. And, uh, we're not raising to the levy limit to the tune of at least one-point-four million dollars, which I think is the highest that I've ever seen in the years that we've been here. And, you know, that's a direct reduction off people's taxes. So, I mean, I think you've really, you know, touched all the bases in terms of a, 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 a nice, balanced, financial approach at this particular town meeting, and also really the way, the way the whole process operates, and, and I know, you know, you know, with the last FinCon meeting, you know, I, you know, Phil, you know, actually was the one that, that, that said that, you know? The key, I think, to successful municipal budgeting is balance. And, uh, those categories that I referenced, I think, um, were balanced very well. So, you know, clearly, you put a lot of time into this, and, um, you, you know, I know Irene, you're, you're new on board, and you didn't get a chance to participate in this, but, you know, I look forward to you doing that as well. And, uh, just from the limited interaction that I've had with you, there's no question that I think that you're gonna be a key contributor to this as well. So, um, I think that this is a great, uh, chart going forward, and, um, we'll, we'll take it to the next step to the Finance Committee and then town meeting.
Thank you, Brett. Bill?
I also wanna thank Zach, Paul, and Irene, I think, uh, and, and others that have participated in the financial planning, this is hard work. There's an awful lot of competing interests. There's a lot, awful lot of departments have waited a long time to, to move and progress their projects forward. I know when we talk about stabilization, I've talked to you about this before, Zach, and others frankly, when we talk about the stabilization and that thirteen-point-seven million, I think it is thirteen-point-seven million, there have been checks written on that money that have yet to be cashed, so it's important that as much as people wanna report that we're sitting flush with cash, town meeting and the financial team have, and, uh, the residents of the town have already decided to use that bulk of that funds in support of, uh, the thirty-two million dollars that are appropriated for woodland school. You know, so with that said, people talk, the, the next thing they'll talk about is, well, look at our excess levy capacity. And, and I always like to clarify these things. So, when we talk about free cash and we talk about excess levy capacity, those aren't terms that most citizens are familiar with or understand. We're using municipal jargon, state, uh, finance jargon to, as we should, by the way. But I, I think when we talk about it here sometimes, when we talk about it in front of cameras, in front of press, it's important to say what those are. When we talk about the town's great position with excess levy capacity, we talk about our ability to tax our citizens more. It means that with Proposition two and a half, the current residents have money that we could go after if we needed to.
Correct. Absolutely correct.
That doesn't make us rich. It means we have excess levy capacity, it means we have the ability to tax our citizens more. When we talk about free cash, as an example, that's the amount of cash through great discipline, in my opinion, so I'm, I'm not knocking it, I'm just trying to state the facts as I see it, that town departments have not used that were, that was raised and appropriated from the taxpayer from last year, or prior year. So, it's unused money that comes as a result bubbling up from, uh, the various departments returning cash, saying, hey, I thought it was gonna cost this, it didn't, I thought I was gonna need to do this, we changed plan, whatever. But, uh, so free cash is something we've taxed the folks for, and the levy capacity is what we can't tax them further for. And, and I'm, I'm not preaching to people who live it every day, I apologize if it feels that way.
Not in the least.
Uh, I'm actually doing it, uh, so that everybody in the room and everybody watching at home understands what the, what the jargon means. So, that thirteen-point-seven, while making us look healthy right now, is already a good portion of that's appropriated. But I wanna echo what's been said by the other board members, and, and by a lot of people. I think we've got good balance. I think we still need to maintain the discipline. I still think we need to maintain our five-year capital planning process. And I don't wanna shortcut other departments in favor of others so that we can step ahead their projects. I wanna, I wanna force that discipline, I, I think we ought to, as a Board of Selectmen, I think we ought to encourage that, show the discipline ourselves. But one of the things I wanted to ask is, I wanted to ask about, and I'll use the term OPEB, but it's basically what it comes down to is our unfunded pension liability. I don't see an article for that. You know, the article that was recently in the Milford Daily News regarding our unfun, uh, Midway's unfunded pension liability, they talked about a fifty-seven point something million dollar unfunded pension liability. For clarity, that's money that the town has an obligation to, that currently through the, uh, through the accounting practices that are allowed by state, is not really on the books. So, it's unfunded, but there's a, there's a great deal of pressure, and state hasn't decided at which year, at what time, and how much has to be financed. We're gonna have to fund our unfunded pension liability. If not to the tune of sixty-one million, you and I exchanged some emails somewhere around the tune of twenty-five million.
Correct.
That's not budgeted, that's not in our plan. Okay, so, what, what is that number?
If you, yeah, we, we actually do budget six-hundred thou, it was seven-hundred thousand-
I'm sorry.
Last couple of years.
We have.
We budget six-hundred thousand per year, plus we're currently on an on-you-go, how do you say it? Pay-as-you-go. Pay-as-you-go basis, yeah.
Paul, excuse me, Paul, no one can hear you.
Zach can clarify that, so the pension is two different things.
Yeah, I, I think you just, you, I know you understand there's two different things, but, yeah. Yeah, so there's the unfunded pension liability, which has not-
Then the post-employment benefits.
Yes, and, uh, currently, post-employment benefits is on the balance sheet as a liability, so it's hurting a lot of towns. The, um, unfunded liability of the pension system is not, however, that's in legislative right now, where it, it may end up being there, and, um, we do fund that, that's mandated. So, if it just ends up on the balance sheet, the only thing it's gonna do is hurt us basically in a position for bonding and whatnot, but it's gonna do that across the Commonwealth, so.
Yeah, to everybody.
And I, I know OPEB's wildly disputed, um, I'm not a huge fan of it, I have to say.
By the way, there are pieces of it that I absolutely don't agree with.
Yeah.
Some of the accounting, the way they do it is, that had it explained to me in depth, and
Yeah, yeah.
They change every year.
So, I, I really can't see it being mandated, however, we're still taking that, there's a lot of communities that are not even touching it. So, we are taking that approach of, alright, this is real, we're gonna fund it to the point of affordability, and I think that's what we're doing right now.
Wasn't there, there wasn't there, and I, if I remember discussions with the previous treasurer, where they were gonna look to put a couple hundred thousand dollars each year towards that fund?
Yeah, we have it in the budget.
Okay, so it's now come off?
It's, it's come off an actual article, and it's within our operating budget now. For the last three years.
And it's voted at the annual town meeting.
What's that?
It's voted at the annual town meeting.
Okay.
In Article Four.
Good, so, so the, the amount and when that actually has to be funded differently is still yet to be decided by state legislation?
Correct. And honestly, I can't see-
And you have no way to know where that's going, right?
This could, a lot of communities that are not in a position such as we are, where we're actually turning back, we're not taxing to the level we can.
Right.
As you know, a lot of communities that do, do not have that luxury.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, all of a sudden, whack, a two-million-dollar mandated per year appropriation would straight-up bankrupt most communities in the surrounding areas, so I cannot see that happening.
Do me a favor and, uh, you, keep the board apprised of where that legislation's going, and if there's any influence that we might have in seeking, uh, information through our state and state representatives.
Absolutely.
That would be helpful, if we wanna guide that, if we wanna have influence on that, that's, stay on top of that legislation.
But in my opinion, we are doing a pretty proactive approach to it, you know?
I'm not critical, I'm just saying, the, the, the picture as we, as we paint it needs to be complete, that's all.
Yeah, it's a large figure, sixty-one million dollars, nothing to sneeze at.
Yeah, and, and everybody, and, and, that's why actuarial tables are used, everybody's not gonna retire tomorrow, everybody's not gonna need the benefit today.
Yeah.
And so, you scale that for reasons that are appropriate. But, I, I just wanna say to, to the comments that the other board members have had, we do a great job. We're balanced in our approach, we plan thoughtfully, and we just need to continue that, and those are the exact comments I heard at the FinCon meeting. And in large part, it's a result of the information and the, the hard work that you do and provide, uh, along with the rest of the financial team. And I, I don't wanna leave out the department heads, because the department heads most certainly contribute to the spending and to the savings when we're talking about free cash, and good budget discipline.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, and I, I thought we might have left them out, and I didn't wanna leave them out, so thank you again, this is, this is helpful, and I think it helps us go forward, and just tells us, stay on the, stay on track.
Absolutely.
We've got some big projects, we can digest them, we can manage through them, provided we maintain our discipline.
Absolutely, and you mentioned multiple-time capital planning, and that's one of the most important things any municipality can possibly do, so I, I agree one-hundred percent, we need, we need to stay on top of that.
Yeah, I, I think that, that it's not, as far as I'm concerned, everybody does a good job, it's not painting a picture of anything, I think that it speaks for itself, uh, well, we can't be too cavalier about it either. I mean, I, I never say that the town's in superb financial shape, it's always, what, good, it's well-managed, everybody's working hard, I think we're always looking for, if you go to the FinCon meetings and meetings during the day, we're always looking at ways to save money, consolidating, bonding, increasing this, increasing that, providing, um, support to the taxpayer. So, you know, you do the best you can, can we do better? Sure, we can do better. But I think, you know, for the most part, I think we're doing, uh, a real good job in providing the services that the people want. You know, we can't talk on both sides of our mouth. Our mouths, you know, people want services, they want good services. You know, they want, be able to go to, wanna, wanna be able to go to the senior center. We get a lot of requests for a lot of things, they want all the roads to be repaired, and we have a plan for that. You know, police and fire. I mean, I had a situation, um, in January, where, um, you know, and it happens all the time, it happens to many, many people every day, where they had to call the fire department. And they were there in thirty seconds, it wasn't because of me, it was because, that's what they do, they save lives, they come. And I think the people have become accustomed to seventy percent of the calls to the fire department being for emergencies, saves people's lives, saves people's lives. The school system that we have, have an excellent school system. But we always have to try to make, do a better job at educating our children, because there are a lot of people, poor people, or even people with families trying to make ends meet, and, uh, even people who make two excellent salaries, you have kids at school, a couple of kids going to college, it's tough, so we want an excellent school system so that these kids can compete with other kids who go to private schools, so I think, you know, we have to keep doing that. We're all, you know, we've all lived here for a long time. Milford's been conservative for a long time, even before Proposition two and a half. Milford didn't do a lot of things back then because it was very, very conservative. And after Proposition came at the plate, and we had to lay off many, many people, many teachers, and I remember those days, it was brutal, it was terrible. Over time, we're able to hire people back, bank guards, at, at the state level, that the representatives that we've had, and now we have, you know, John Fernandez, a tremendous representative, who, uh, works very hard to make sure local aid is increased all the time. That's a tremendous benefit. I mean, if that were to, uh, be cut severely, then a lot of things that we've been doing, uh, would not be possible, so, we put it out there, upstairs, they make the decisions. And I think if you were to, uh, look at all the decisions that have been made over the past, I don't know, twenty years, twenty-five years, they've done a damn good job, I don't think they've made many mistakes. And, uh, and that's what we want, we want, you know, town meeting not to be a rubber stamp, hey, here's the information, pro and con, people get up, dissent, whatever, and then a vote is taken, but I think at the end of the day, you know, the people truly are, all these, all, all of us, all the people that work for the taxpayers, the people who serve, people who volunteer, we have a lot of people who volunteer, and it's amazing why they volunteer, they don't get anything for it, except aggravation. But they love Milford, and I think that shows. A lot of times, we don't know what's in our own backyard, but if you talk to people who have just moved here, who lived in other communities, they just can't believe the, uh, the attitude of people at town hall, the way people bend over backwards to help people with different questions, the services that, that we provide. I just hope we can provide more services, because I think it's, it's good for everyone. And at the same time, yeah, we have to be frugal, and we have to spend the monies, dollars wisely, and, um, and so, that's what it is.
So, Chairman, if I could follow up-
Yes.
Final comment slash warning, if you will. This year, we, we experienced a really, really great year, three-point-eight mil in free cash, that's a huge number. The debt for the woodland school hasn't hit our books yet. We're not realizing debt payments yet, we won't even see a next year, we probably won't see the first till the following fiscal year. So, the amount of available funds right now should not be an expectation of future years, 'cause this really is just a fantastic year, so it goes along with proper planning, utilizing our resources when we have them. However, it just should be put out there that this happened to be a really, really good year, and we're not gonna have three-point-eight every single year in available free cash, so.
So, what'd you say, primarily, uh, increase on the anticipated revenues?
Um, there was a good turnback in multiple budgets, um, when Mr. Solazi was administrator, we put in hydrant services at a certain level, it didn't go that high, I think we realized almost a half-million dollars in savings there. It was a large amount of, uh, turnback in health insurance, but yes, there was a large amount of larger, um, revenue versus estimated, and primarily due to, uh, the Milford Hospital with huge permits coming in, and, uh, motor vehicle excise came in pretty significant as well. So, it's not only just turnback in budget, it is-
Right.
Revenue above.
So, it, it, it's more than just-
It was a combination, yeah.
The revenues that came in led to that, and Milford Hospital, that's kind of a, I don't wanna say blip on the radar, but I mean-
It was, yes, it was a abnormality for sure.
Project that happens, it's not gonna happen every year.
Exactly, yeah.
And that's, that's why I think we have to always look at, uh, you know, watching the expenses, of course, but also trying to make sure we augment the tax base.
Yes.
Whether it be another facility, another hotel, getting manufacturing in, companies, uh, we have to do that, because it's incumbent upon to do that, I think that's part of the reason why, you know, the town's been successful, because there've been many, many years, probably five or six, seven, eight years, where- where we haven't been able to apply monies to offset the tax rate. The monies just haven't been there. So, but it's important that we, you know, balance it off with the expenses and seeking new ways to, to augment the, the tax base. So that the more monies that come in, it's, it's less for the residential taxpayer.
Yeah, we're looking at two years in a row of fantastic new growth, too. So that's not always gonna continue.
Sure, yeah. Okay, thank you, once again.
Thank you.
Great job, and we appreciate all the good work. Zach?
Nice job.
Appreciate it.
Good job, Paul.
Rick, and Moody's not here, but he doesn't deserve any accolades anyway, so. All right, at this time, what I'd like to do is just, you know, go over our articles or any other articles that will be voted upon in, in a couple of weeks. And Rick, correct me if I'm wrong, if, if we've already taken a vote. First one, I think, is the, is the fireworks. If we, if we voted on that as a board, Rick?
I think we voted on it.
Technically, I haven't voted on any articles, and whether you choose to or not would be-
No, no, what I'm asking is, if we voted on it, no, we haven't.
Well, you've put them on the warrant, they're on the warrant.
You voted, the articles have put them on the warrant?
Put them on the warrant, correct.
But I mean, as far as the articles, right, support them.
Yeah, so if you wanna discuss any or whatever, that would be-
So let me just-
If you need any background from me, I'd be happy to help.
Just, just for clarity, we have to be a little bit more clear. We voted to approve the, the articles to go forward. That doesn't mean that we voted to support the, all of those articles. And frankly, there wasn't an ability to, to vote to support those articles, because there wasn't dollar values appropriated for them. Right, so, so that's-
Yeah.
So for example, we've still not determined, well, I'll, I'll let you go, Mr. Chairman. I just, I just wanted to be clear, this is what we normally do. We normally look and then make motions to support it.
Okay, on the fireworks, is there a motion to support?
I'd move.
Motion.
I'll second it, but we, we already took votes to-
But I think what we voted, what we voted, Brian, right.
Our articles.
But then we also said that we would, before town meeting-
That's right.
Go over the articles, and, you know, if a board member is not favoring something, they don't have to vote for it.
For example, how much did you vote to support for the GIS system?
We, we voted to support the article on the town meeting warrant. So I, you know, I don't know that there is a number in there at this point.
Right, so, you don't know if it's eight thousand dollars or seven hundred thousand dollars?
Yeah, guys, I wanna make this simple.
All right, please.
Let's just go, make this simple.
Go ahead.
So on the fireworks, is there a motion to support the fireworks?
I move.
Okay, move by Bill. Brian, your second, on the fireworks, all in favor, unanimous. The next one is Article Four.
I'd move.
Which is the, uh-
I'm sorry.
Audio at upstairs.
I'm sorry, I can't, I can't participate on that article.
Okay.
That involves my company and all.
Motion by Brian, I'll second on the audio for, for upstairs, so people can hear what people, what proponents of the articles are saying. Article Seven, that's the, what Barney was talking about and also I mentioned, as far as the Milford Pond and Louisa Lake voting regulations. Your motion?
Yeah, I'll move to support that. So are we not, I guess by omission then, are we not supporting the police chief article? Article Six?
Oh, we can go back to that, sure.
I just don't know how we-
Yeah, let's do, let's do-
Do we take selectmen articles first?
Yeah, let's take Seven. All right, so Brian makes a motion on the regulations for Milford Pond and Louisa Lake.
Seven.
Second, Bill?
Yes.
Okay. We'll definitely go back to that. Order selectmen, this is a hundred thousand dollars for the dam inspection and also design and all that that we talked about. Motion by Brian, second by Bill, any discussion? All in favor, unanimous. At this time, we received, well, I saw this over the weekend, this letter, the, from Sue Clark, that I would like to have Sue talk to us briefly about. This is an article for the senior center director, and she's asking that the, we appropriate seventy-five thousand dollars.
Is it Article Thirteen?
Article Thirteen. And this is to restore, there are two rooms in the senior center that have been vacant upstairs for a long time. I think there's been a lot of discussion about utilizing that in the right way. And I, I didn't realize that Sue had prepared a summary for us, a request and rationale and all that, but I'll let Sue explain it. Sue?
Thank you, Dino. I did go before the finance committee last week and presented this to them. My request is to take one of the unfinished rooms on the second floor and turn it into a true fitness room. Currently, we do have a room that we, that we have dedicated for fitness, but it's inadequate. It's too small to hold the size of classes that we've been doing lately. Currently, the senior center offices, offers fifteen different fitness classes per week with class sizes ranging from five to twenty-five, sometimes there's even more people in the room. And because the classes are so large, we end up putting them down in the Milford rooms. The Milford rooms were never, they were, they were never there to hold fitness classes. Oftentimes, we do have all kinds of activities planned for the fitness rooms, I mean, for the, the Milford rooms. So if there is a meeting, or a luncheon, or an activity, or bingo, we can't use those rooms. So the seniors are forced to go upstairs into the smaller activity room, and oftentimes, they don't wanna go there. It's too small, the air quality is bad. So we're sitting in, on this room that is very large, that would be perfect for a, a true fitness center. And my goal is, is to, to get our seniors in better health. I mean, we offer numerous, numerous programs, fun activities. We go on trips, we have, we have all kinds of fun things to do at the senior center. They play all kinds of games, they stay very busy, they stay very social. But to move in the direction of health and fitness and wellness would be a real opportunity for our seniors, and I think that they would enjoy it. I think it would also bring in a younger, the younger seniors. I think if we offered this space to them. I know for a senior citizen to go to a gym, it could be very intimidating for them, from what they're wearing to how they're performing. I think they're much more comfortable coming to the senior center however they wanna dress, and they perform at their own capacity, they do the best they can. And all of our fitness classes are geared towards them. So I think it, it makes it very comfortable for them to come in and do these things. The senior center has just, I mean, the activity has grown. We, we've provided sixty-six hundred, sixty-six hundred units of service to thirteen hundred seniors in one month. I mean, that's phenomenal. We really are, we're, we're hitting all these seniors, they're coming, they're enjoying themselves. I think steering them into the direction of health, fitness, wellness is good for them, it's good for us. And, and the, the senior population is continuing to grow. According to the town census, currently, thirty percent are senior citizens. And within the next five years, it'll be thirty-nine percent.
Now, what's the age on that? That's important.
Over sixty.
Oh, okay.
Over sixty. So, to be there-
Wait, it's fifty-five at Denny's. That's not right.
Well, I could go, if I rework those numbers, we have a lot more. You know, I, I am a new director, I have observed the day-to-day operation. I think this is the way to go. I think we really need to, to bring our seniors into, in a new direction. We need to keep them healthy, we need to keep them well. It's good for their mind, it's good for their body. So my proposal is to turn one of those empty rooms into a true fitness center. I had John Erickson, our building commissioner, go and, and do an estimate, and he estimated that seventy-five thousand dollars would do that. So that's my proposal.
Okay. Sir?
This is Ed Ross.
I'm the chairman of the council on aging, and-
By the way, you do a great job with the Shine Program.
He does.
Also direct the Shine Program in San Francisco.
Everyone I refer to you, they always call me back and say, the guy's unbelievable.
Thank you, we got a great staff down there, and, and some of our numbers aren't even in Sue's numbers. I mean, we take, we take probably five or six hundred calls a, a month from seniors all over Worcester County at our office. And some of those numbers don't hit Sue's numbers, so I mean, it's-
None of them are.
It's really amazing, and, and I do wanna thank the town for what they did for the Shine Program with that room. We, we're in now. And if it wasn't that, we couldn't be doing the numbers we're doing, helping the people we're helping. So Milford's been, as, as Dino said, Milford's a great town. They stepped up to the plate for the seniors all over Worcester County, so that's great. But this particular project here, it's been, it's been, it's got the support of the council on aging, that we move ahead, would, would like to see this happen. Again, as Sue said, the well-being of our seniors and, and, and fitness is, is a key thing. It's a key thing. I can tell myself, I went through a little Weight Watchers thing recently, and-
At the senior center.
At the senior center. And, you know, and, and I can see myself turning a little bit better, getting a little bit better. And several programs like that, and as Sue said, if you go outside to another gym, Pilates class, Zumba class, well, the younger folks are gonna be looking at us saying, you know, with questionable looks.
Do you do Zumba?
I don't do Zumba. But the council does support this article, and would like to see it move forward.
So what happens now? I mean, what happens now when you provide fitness for the seniors? Where is it held?
It's held anywhere we can put them. So I'd like to say it's held in the Milford rooms. The room that we have upstairs, that's our activity center, is too small. So if you have more than ten people in the room, they're bumping into each other. If they're doing a yoga class, they can't put their mats down. If they're doing a Zumba class, they're bumping into each other. So we let them use the Milford rooms.
That's the big room downstairs.
Those are the big rooms, yeah. The Milford room is a big room that we can partition off into three smaller rooms. But, which is fine, but that means that my, my maintenance person is constantly setting up tables, taking down tables, because we have planned things for those rooms. We have meetings on Thursday, MMA is going, and they're gonna be using our room. We have, we have so many different meetings, we have lunches, we have breakfasts, we have, we have things that are planned for those rooms. Those rooms were never intended to be a fitness center. Those rooms were intended to, for meetings and, and gatherings, and... So, you know, if there's something planned for those rooms, then we have to put a note up in, in the front of the building saying, you know, fitness classes are happening upstairs. And trust me, they do not like it, because they just, they're more comfortable downstairs, they can spread out, they're, it, it's just a better fit for them. So I think if the room that, that we, the largest room we have left, if we were able to dedicate that, we wouldn't have the problem of it being used for anything other than that designated purpose. And the room that we have now as the activity center, we could put equipment in there. We have, we have some equipment in there, we have some equipment in storage. So if somebody wants to go in and use the treadmill, they can't. If there's a class going on in that room, they have to wait for the class to be over, and they have to come back at another time. So I think if we, if we were able to just have a room for classes and whatever they wanted to do up there, it would be very beneficial.
And Rick, if we, we have to go over better on this, right? Yes, you would have.
Yeah.
Okay, so, if, if, if it passes, town meeting approves it, and we approve it now, being the winter months and all that, probably get better prices, because in wintertime, there might be a contractor who needs a job, and it will probably be ready by April.
That'd be great.
Right.
That would be great.
Okay, let's go to Brian.
Yeah, no, I think it's great, you know, it's so gratifying to see the increased use at, at the senior center. It's really, you know, what we envisioned-
That's right.
And, and planned on when it was built ten years ago. And, as you know, you know, we allowed, you know, four unfinished rooms at the time of construction. Well, two of them have since been refinished. One of them, we did, I think, two or three years ago, where your offices are now. And, you know, that just worked beautifully, because, you know, when we built the building, we knew that, we hoped, I should say, that this would be the eventual outcome, so everything is roughed in there, and you're just talking about finishing these off.
Right.
So, you know, the room that you're talking about, yeah, it would be ideal. You know, it's the largest room, it sits down at the end of the hall. You'd, you'd be able to get a nice crowd of folks in there, they wouldn't feel cramped, they could do, you know, whatever workout activities they feel comfortable in. And then you're not gonna impact your main part of the senior center for your lunches or bingo, or, you know, whatever activities you have. So it makes a lot of sense, and, you know, I, I, I think it's great that you're, you know, pushing forth the initiative. It's what this board encouraged you to do when you came before us a few months ago and, and gave us an update as to where you're at with, with things. So, you know, I fully support it, one hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, Sue, I, I think you're clear. Hopefully, you're clear from our last discussion how much I support the activities that, that you have, and more importantly, the way you've put your fingerprint on the changes that have happened. I think there's been a great deal of improvement, as you know. You impact my family on a regular basis with the support that you provide seniors within my household, so, and, and have for years, the senior center has for years. But you heard a great deal of the discussion that happened tonight. And so what I don't know, and I'll ask the town administrator, is there any existing five-year plan for anything or any requirements at the senior center?
Not for this project. He's asking me if it's listed on a five-year plan, this particular project?
Yeah.
No, it's not written on it.
Okay, is there anything on any plan related to the senior center?
Yeah, there's some painting, I believe, in the next few years.
Okay, and the reason why I ask that, you've, you're, I, I'm, I'll say it differently, because you're, you're, you're new, and it's not as if there's a regimented training program that says, okay, Sue, here's, here's how we budget finance, here's our five-year planning models, here's how we do this. And so, I, I know, for example, there are people that occasionally take falls, bad falls, and they take bad falls at the senior center. And I know there's been historically some concern about outside, the walkways, how they should be positioned, are they right? I know there was one just recently, a person's undergoing surgery, and hopefully, they're, they're doing better tonight. I wonder where activity like this is, 'cause hopefully, we can be in the preventive phase, which I think that's where you wanna be. You wanna get them exercising, preventing these injuries later. But when we're talking about some of those seniors, they're not gonna always be able to benefit. Where this sits as it relates to the, some of the safety things you might wanna do? Where does this, is there anything else that you, that we don't know? Because when you asked me to support, this is how I internalize it. When you asked me to support it without, without a plan, and it wasn't this board that recommended you come forward with an article, it was Attorney Murray, I chose to have a different discussion with you that evening, as opposed to challenge that thought process, because I like to see planning, and I like to see some, some thought put into this. I know it was part of, part of a thought process, but we've not followed up on that and not planned that in any particular year. Is there anything else that you see within a five-year window that you'd like to accomplish at the senior center that may fit into the, the capital plans? Is there work that needs to be done? And, and how should we prioritize this against those? And the next question that you can answer is, then how does this board prioritize your need that right now hasn't been planned in any particular year against those other departments that do have plans in particular years and have worked on that? I know you haven't been here to put together that plan.
No, and, and to answer, Bill, I think, you know, the building's relatively new.
Sure.
It's ten years old, so I don't see that, you know, a lot of things have deteriorated. I think when the building was built, it was, it was really, the architect was spot on.
Sure.
He took into consideration all the accessibility issues. I think that the, the state of the building is really good right now.
It is, I'd agree.
Yeah, so I don't really see, from what I've seen being there, I don't see any, any big capital projects coming down the pike. I think the fact that we had these rooms that were unfinished, that was the plan. The plan, the plan, I think, was to get those rooms finished as we needed them. And I think there's a real need for, for that now. You know, they, they, they were left unfinished with the anticipation that they would be finished and we would have a, a need for them, and what would that need be? I don't think we knew what that need was ten years ago. But, excuse me, I think as time is progressing, we're seeing where the needs are.
Yeah, I think, I think we're talking a different- Yeah, I think, I think we're talking a different plan. I think when we talk the someday plan, we'd say someday we'd like to do this. And what I'm talking about is a plan where people put targets for specific years and place some dollar amounts in there for estimates.
Well, I know that, I looked at the, the capital plan that was done prior to me being the director.
Right.
And I think in 2022 or something, there is a plan to paint the exterior of the building in some, at some point to replace the carpets. I think those are maintenance-type things, though, because those things have a shelf life, and the shelf life will have expired in, in that many years.
Okay.
So, you know, I don't know what the, my, what the five-year plan would be. I don't think I've taken a good look at, you know, what's the building gonna need in five years.
Okay. Okay. That's, that's an answer, because you're, you're new, and if you haven't had a chance to develop that, you haven't had a chance to develop that.
Well, I think with the building being relatively new, too-
Sure, it does help you.
I don't want it to be that worn out in five years.
Right.
You know, it should be okay for a while.
Well, ten years, you start to see the useful life. But I guess, I guess the point is, you've, you've heard some of the things I've talked about with respect to planning. I want to give you the opportunity to, to plan out. I want you to be able to prioritize those items, and, and we need to be able to balance those against other departments' needs. And in all honesty, I'm, I worry that the messages we've given other departments and other groups at times about planning, I just, I, my worry is that you come forward and say, and we approve, and people look at that and say, look, that just went ahead of everything I've been planning. So, so I'm supportive of the, I'm supportive of the concept. I agree wholeheartedly that we need to do it. The question is when, and I would, I would tell you that we need to get you planning. And, and we need to be able to work with the FinCom and the different departments over a longer time, talking about, this is, well, we're gonna do this. But that's just my opinion. You've got one person's opinion. I'm not sure it's fair to other departments if you jump ahead. I guess that's where I am.
Okay, I'll just, I'm glad you came in. The information is, I think is very good. To me, we do have a plan. Things change. We're the ones that work with the FinCom. If we feel something is important, if it's, if it's ready now to go forward, I think we're talking about the Senior Center, I don't think you have to say anything more about what's good for the seniors. I don't want to wait two or three years to get this room renovated. I think you've given a very good rationale. And plus, I would rather spend seventy-five thousand dollars now over the wintertime, or let's say less than that, than waiting till next year, going out in the summertime, when construction is hot and whatnot. It may cost eighty thousand or eighty-five thousand. So to me, I try to look at it, you know, what's in the best interest of the person who has to pay for it? Is it better to do it now and save money? This is something that's not a frill, this is something that's important. You talked about the, the activities, and I've had probably three or four people talk to me about the inconvenience of not having a room all the time. They have doctor's notes, the, what's the program with the sneakers, Silver Sneakers?
Silver Sneakers.
Silver Sneakers. And I know people that go to that, they love that.
Yeah, it's a good program.
They don't want to go to a gym.
No.
They're very petrified of going to a gym.
They don't have the hundred-dollar shoes they need to walk in the door.
And so to me, it just makes sense. I mean, ultimately, hey, as Harry Truman said, the buck stops here. We make the decisions, we work with people, we bend over backwards with people, and sometimes if we feel that something should go forward, and I think this is reasonable, I think it's practical, and I think the taxpayers will save money doing it now rather than next year, and if we do it now, we'll probably be able to, it might be functional by March or April.
That'd be great.
You know, so that's my feeling, that's how I look at it. Any more, any more questions or comments?
I just like to bring up, because, because Bill touched on something, and, and, you know, the Finance Committee, you know, it seems, and I saw it at the last meeting, you know, there seems to be this sudden dogma to, to this, this capital plan, which, you know, I think is, is partially an outgrowth of the tension that's existing right now between the Capital Improvement Committee, which I think has been less and less involved and less effective, and the Finance Committee that, you know, more or less wants to, you know, oversee this process more. And, you know, there's always been capital plans that have been circulated throughout the town, but generally, it's a guideline. It's, it's, it's a blueprint to go forward. And, you know, that's what I had always thought, that's how the town operated. So I wanted to check a little bit. So I looked at the Long-Term Capital Planning Subcommittee Report of the Finance Committee that came out in 2012. And lo and behold, right there, it says, "A capital plan is a blueprint for planning a community's capital expenditures. It envisions potential expenditures." It talks about also that they're asking department heads not to put in placeholders in order to give a clearer picture of the funding dollars required on a yearly basis. So this was circulated by the Finance Committee, you know, only two years ago. And now, I have not seen any memo, letter, correspondence or anything saying, "You can't submit an article to be put on unless it's on this capital plan." But that's the conversation that, that came out of the meeting the other night. You know, I also looked at their Budget Subcommittee Report, which was done back in 2012, and, and they talk about capital appropriations. And they said, you know, that the practice of capital appropriations dependent upon a positive free cash number and budget capacity. Well, you heard Zach. You know, we've got free cash that's in a record number this year. So this is the context that at least the Finance Committee themselves, through their own reports, their own recommendations, have targeted how capital plans are used. It says, "A five-year capital plan should be collected each year to update capital needs for future planning." You know, if, if you look down the list at prior town meeting expenditures, I dare say not all of them are on this capital plan. And, you know, I think that there was one committee that wanted to spend twenty thousand plus on these, these iPads, and I didn't see it on a plan anywhere. I haven't seen a plan going forward, how it's gonna be used. All of the questions that were asked about the GIS, nobody asked those questions, but the Finance Committee wanted to do it, they got the appropriation through the town meeting, and, and that's fine. You know, because I think, at least me, as, as a board member, I give a certain amount of discretion, I give a certain amount of trust to, to a committee and, and a department, that they have, that they know their department, that they've investigated things, and that they feel it's a wise investment, and I believe that that deserves my support. Well, you know, we haven't seen that materialize, but, you know, that wasn't on any plan. So, so why is that okay, but this isn't? And, and I also hear this argument, well, we can't do this because someone else is gonna lose out. Who's gonna lose out? Who, who's losing out? What's not getting done? I mean, you know, the articles have been submitted, they've been evaluated by the financial team, they've been reviewed by this committee, they've been reviewed by the Finance Committee. I mean, if you don't like it, and you don't want to do it, you know, vote against it, you know? But don't, you know, throw all of this smoke and mirrors in front of it and say, well, you know something, this is really good, I really support it, I want to do it, but, you know, you didn't put it on the magic piece of paper. You didn't put it on that five-year plan. Oh, something else? Well, that doesn't matter, that was something we wanted, but you didn't put it on the plan, so we're not gonna support. That's not right. That's not right. It's not right, and it's not fair, and it's not in accordance with the Finance Committee publications. So to me, you know, I look at things on the merits, and, you know, no one has to tell me what the plan was for that building when it was built. You know, we wouldn't have put in, roughed in rooms if we didn't envision those to be put, to be finished off as the needs dictate. Well, the need dictates. And, you know, senior citizens, I think, deserve to have this kind of a service in the Senior Center. You've certainly met the argument, you, you've done a ton of work down there, the council's done a great job, you're bringing in all kinds of new participation in there. We need to support that. And that's not just sitting here saying, geez, you're doing a great job. That's putting our money where our mouths are. And that's saying, I'm gonna stand up and I'm gonna support this article for you because you're a department head and you're doing a heck of a job for the seniors in that community. And that's what I'm doing.
Any more comments? Bill?
Yeah, I actually agree with a lot of that. Some of it, some of the capital planning process, some of it is unforeseen, some of it's emergency-based, some of it's a lot of things. I'm not sure who some of the comments were directed at, but I have no problem saying that we need to be disciplined and thoughtful in our, our capital planning process. I have no problem defending it, and as I don't have any problem defending all the work that Sue's done, and that the, the work that's, the great work that's being done there. Who's, who's being left behind? There are people with things in next year's capital plan that didn't know they could bring them forward, because they didn't know they were, we were escalating the, the plan or had free dollars available. So don't take it personal.
Okay.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
No, okay.
Because it's very important that everybody does-
It is very important, and I know, you all appreciate that.
As much as the, the tempers and all of that might flare, or the rhetoric might flare from different members.
And I know you appreciate it.
You are greatly appreciated. I don't have any problem with saying that, and I don't find it hypocritical to say that, that, you know, you've had an impact on people within my family, and I've said that many times, too. So I wouldn't support it. I would like to see it in a plan, and I'd like to see, more importantly, I'd like to see the broader plan. I, I do think it's needed. I, I think the question of whether it's needed now, whether it's needed in April, whether the funds are required now, I'd like to hear a little bit more about what the room construction would be like. When we talk about seventy-five thousand dollars, it's just minor things, and to see how far along, along you are in that plan. I've just not seen anything yet, so. I, I've seen a dollar figure, and I've seen the workout area. I get it, generally speaking, but I'll wait for the motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to support this article.
Motion by Brian, is there a second? I'll second it for discussion. Any discussion?
Yeah, both opposition.
Okay.
Opposition in need of a plan.
All in favor? Oppose? Two in favor, one opposed, and with Brian's, I mean, with Bill's comments. So I would, you know, for the future, make up, you know, do a plan, what's needed for the Senior Center. I mean, when is the painting supposed to be done, the year 2022?
I think so.
No, 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 it's gonna make it to that, but-
Okay.
And, and the other thing is-
Make sure you get it, make sure you get it a lot sooner, huh? Okay.
That would be more than any paint last in New England ever.
Sue, thank you, Ed, thank you.
Howdy, howdy, Frank.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Good to see you guys.
Let me see. Okay, Article sixteen, Rick, that's the Gottfried Brook, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's very, very important that we go forward on that. It involves people's properties, people's lives, and the town engineer is very, very high, and this board has been pushing this for a long time. Motion by Brian?
What's the amount? I'm sorry?
I believe that amount, Mr. Chairman, is three hundred thousand. I think it's two eighty for the work, and there may be some takings required. According to Town Council, would be another twenty thousand.
Three hundred.
Three hundred, correct.
Okay, motion.
What?
Motion by Brian, second by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor? Oppose? Unanimous. I think this was brought up by Rick last week, Article seventeen, which is forty thousand dollars to be used for the Middle School East Building Reuse Committee to obtain an architect or engineering studies for that building.
Yeah, and Mr. Chairman, this is, as a liaison to that committee, this is absolutely one of those things that we've been talking about for ten years. That, that number has not come and not been any part of any plan, but there was no, well, the fact of the matter is, there's no way to plan it.
Right.
There was a ability to, there was no ability to understand when SBA would fund. You know, we could have had it on there for fifteen years, the placeholder, which is exactly what we don't want to do. So there is a need to understand the structural integrity of that building, mechanical, electrical systems, and there's also the ability to work with a consultant to see what its potential uses might be. So as a member of that committee, I'd like to make a motion that we approve that.
Motion by Bill? Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second it.
Seconded, discussion? Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. I mean, you, you know, I mean, I guess this is talked about, I guess, as much as the Senior Center renovation of the fitness room has been talked about, but, you know, I would dare say that this has been talked about a lot less. But, you know, I'll be glad to support the motion, but I would encourage the committee to look at the memorandum that I sent last week. I don't know if Rick's got a chance to circulate it or not, but, you know, there could be an opportunity to save that money by utilizing services from Mass Development.
Definitely.
You know, I think that, you know, it just requires a little bit of work and creativity.
Yeah, I think anytime there's potential grants, anytime there's potential use of other monies, certainly not use town money if there was other money available. And that's one of the ones that I want to bring up at the next meeting. So I, I-
Which one's that?
It's, it's gonna be on the agenda for the Middle School East Committee.
Exactly, yeah.
It is going to be on the agenda, correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Uh, no, not Article seventeen. That's already been moved and voted upon by that committee.
Yeah.
But what other potential uses before we utilize that funds, are there other available funds?
That's what the committee funds.
Exactly.
Okay. Moved and seconded, and I believe that's all in favor. Next is Article eighteen, this would be GIS. Like I said, I think this is great, I think we've been working on it, we're moving forward. I'm just not prepared tonight to support. I want to, I'll be attending the FinCom meeting on Wednesday, see what information, see what the Finance Committee says. So at this point, anyway, what's the pleasure of the board?
Well, I, I mean, you know, I, I have no problem supporting the article, I guess, at a number that might be agreed upon in conjunction with the Finance Committee.
We don't know right now, okay. You want to-
It's just not sufficient. Information to tell us.
Why don't we just, if we, if everybody agrees, why don't we just, before town meeting, we can make a judgment on that? Or we could talk about it on Wednesday night, okay?
Well, Wednesday night's not a meeting for us.
No, but we can, yeah, but we can have a feeling, and then we can, if we need a meeting before the town meeting, we could, you know, meet for ten minutes and talk about this. But let's see, I think, let's see what happens Wednesday night, what the feelings and comments of the FinCom are, and then we can go from there. Article twenty-one, Rick, this is, you talked about this last week.
Yes.
How much on this one?
Uh, one thirty-six.
One thirty-six, yes. This would be for heating units and upgrades to the boiler.
Okay.
I'll second.
Motion by Brian, motion by Brian, second by Bill. Any discussion? All in favor? Unanimous. Article twenty-two, the gutters?
Uh, yes. The amount here would be just about seventy thousand. The actual article would be for two hundred and sixty-four thousand, but we'll be able to transfer available funds from the roof account and the window account.
And so the net new money is seventy K still?
Yeah, a little less.
Is there a motion?
I'll move.
Motion by Brian, second by Bill. And I think that's important. So most of the money is, is coming from transfers from other jobs that we've had because of savings, and the only real new money would be the seventy thousand dollars, Rick?
That's correct.
And Mr. Chairman, the important thing to note on Article twenty-two, this was planned. The fact that the original roof and gutter work that, when the bids came in-
Correct.
-were originally higher than what we anticipated made us have to take the gutters off the list and go for the roof, so.
Okay.
That's correct.
Next one, I think, we were at the FinCom meeting last week, when the retirement board came in regarding the town accountant personal services budget.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, that's not the retirement board.
Oh, that's for the contract, right?
That's correct, that's for, to meet contract obligations.
Okay, how much we looking for there?
Ten thousand.
Okay, is there a motion?
I'm sorry, which, which article?
Twenty-three.
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 Yeah, I'll move.
Move by Brian, second by Bill, any discussion? All in favor, oppose, unanimous. Okay, we'll just let them. There were four zoning articles, uh.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And those are eight, ten, fourteen, and what was the other one?
Uh, we have to say that.
What is it?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four?
Twenty-four.
Larry, can you just take, real quickly, go over the planning board articles? Thank you. Okay, sir, have a seat and do the pressure, can you? Article eight?
Article eight, rezones seventy-five parcels in the vicinity of Brooklyn Regional Medical Center and the cancer center from RA to office residential. The second sheet, there is the perimeter map on the parcel maps that shows the areas to be rezoned. The planning board and the industrial development commissioner are co-sponsoring this. There's been enough interest in various parcels surrounding the hospital, especially now since its latest expansion project, to do something other than just residential uses and felt this was a way to set the tone.
Okay.
Take your side.
Brian, any questions?
I'll move.
Motion by Brian, Bill?
This is Article eight, yes, I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? If not, all in favor, oppose, unanimous. Okay, Larry, go ahead.
Article ten adjusts the parking and calculation ratios for shared parking. Currently, there's a kind of convoluted schedule based on the hours of operation of various businesses and multi-use buildings. The problem with that is that the businesses obviously change every once in a while and then those calculations kind of go out the window. What this would do is, is look at the inherent efficiency of having multiple buildings in one plaza and reducing the number of separate chips normally necessary because they are in one plaza. So by special permit from the planning board, you could potentially get a reduction of up to ten percent of what the chart, the parking chart would normally say you need if you have three to five separate uses in the plaza. You could get a, again, by special permit, a reduction of up to twenty percent of what the charts ratio would normally say you needed if you had more than six in the plaza. So this gets closer, gets back to how you would normally calculate parking as opposed to looking at the other, the other method.
That's the pleasure of the board.
I'll move.
Motion by Brian?
I'll second.
Seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor, oppose, unanimous. Article fourteen?
Fourteen is a text amendment. It adjusts the use regulation schedule for the office residential zone. That's the zoning district that's being proposed for the neighborhood surrounding the hospital and it makes sure that the hospital use is a permitted use in the OR zone. It would also make sure that the food service is a secondary use, which is basically the cafeteria in the hospital, isn't allowed to use by special permit. That a heli stop is still prohibited in the zone, except the new footnote twenty-four would allow a hospital use, well, heli stop as an accessory use to hospital, so that that doesn't create a non-conformity. And it would also allow by special permit of the planning board, large-scale solar energy systems, if, if the hospital, in fact, the hospital had considered putting roof-mounted solar on the hospital and they can't do it now because it's in an RA residential zone and that's not allowed. So by special permit in the office residential zone, if, if it does get rezoned, this would allow for that to happen. The last piece of that retains the height requirement for the office residential district, which is identical to the RA single-family zone or one or two-family zone that it's currently zoned. However, it adds a footnote J, the caveat being that a maximum non-residential building height would have to be determined by the planning board under special permit, but even in that case, it can't exceed four stories or fifty feet, whichever is less.
Okay, what's the pleasure?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Motion, seconded, any discussion? All in favor, oppose, unanimous, and I think the last, nope.
Last is Article twenty-four. Article twenty-four rezones thirty-four parcels in the vicinity of Main Street between Water Street and Oran Street. There's a sketch map attached, hopefully I can get a better overlay than this, or overhead than this map for town meeting. The rear portions of a variety of those thirty-four parcels along Main Street are cut by the CB zone because it was done as a strip zone years ago when it was first established. So this zoning amendment will adjust the map so that the CB zone line goes to the rear property line of the various parcels affected.
Yeah, that's, that's a good idea. Move.
Motion by Brian?
I'll second.
Seconded by Bill, any discussion? All in favor?
That's crazy.
That's unanimous.
While, while Larry's here, just have one quick question. We had talked about, I think it was last year, earlier this year, a zoning article to be able to allow more flexibility for the farmers market.
Yeah, no, they're.
Where is that? I'm just, I hate to see them go another year.
Well, they were, it was my understanding, they were staying at the, at the water company. The concerns that we had explained to the folks with Farmers Market is that the zoning by law right now specifically prohibits flea markets anywhere in town. So, to the extent that there's a, there's kind of an inherent conflict, we wanted to be able to work through that and I just haven't had a chance to get back to Jennifer. We've been preparing for town meeting and having public hearings for the zoning articles.
Maybe it comes back to us first before they go back.
Yeah, I've had some discussions with Jennifer and Parks, so we do have some possible locations, some of which will, all of which actually will have to be rezoned. Yeah.
It's not, not related to this, but we've got.
Do you need any information from Larry on that in the future?
No, I'm going through the.
Oh, okay. Okay.
Rick knows what I'm looking for. I thought it was coming back here.
Okay.
I'm waiting for it, that's all.
Okay, anything else for Larry? Larry, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Then just looking at, if we're just going over some articles, Article three is the highway severe for twenty thousand dollars for the stormwater permit. Is there a motion for that?
I'll move.
Motion?
Uh, which article is that?
Number three. This is what we're, we're doing all along with the highway severe for stormwater.
Okay, and it's still twenty thousand, MS four permit, yes, we have to do that, it's the compliance.
Moving, seconded, any discussion? That's unanimous. The police chief, that's what, twenty-five thousand for replacement computers?
I'll move.
Yeah, motion. Seconded, and that's, that's unanimous. Help me if I miss anything. Highway severe, Article nine, is that still on, Rick? Thirty thousand dollars for a generator?
Yes.
For the highway severe?
Yes, it is, Mr. Chairman.
I'll move.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill, any discussion? All in favor, oppose, unanimous. Brian, number fifteen, what are we doing there?
Which one is that?
Army renovation.
Oh, that's just to reduce the borrowing.
Okay.
Zach talked about it.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Second.
Motion is seconded, and that's unanimous. Highway severe, Article nineteen, for a transfer for a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the person replacing an existing truck, a new truck for plowing, sanding, road maintenance.
Which one is that, the highway or?
Yeah.
Is he going forward on that?
Yeah, I don't know.
Going forward on that, I mean, I don't know anything about that.
Yeah, I don't know either. Probably a good place to, stopping point to.
Okay, leave it alone. Leave it alone and get more information. And I think, anything else? Oh, you got, we have the upper Charles Trail Committee. Rick, what are they looking for as far as twenty-seven? Actually, they're, they're just transfers. I just think there's no additional or additional appropriation or additional money. Okay.
We can vote to offset the tax rate, right? The article to offset the tax.
I don't think we know what that number is yet.
Yeah.
We'll find out Wednesday night.
Okay.
It's not, Zach's number, right? It's not the FinCon.
I think it's gonna be what?
I think it's our, yeah, I think it's our.
I think it's gonna be determined Wednesday night. I mean, I'll, I'll vote.
Will we have the, will Zach have the information Wednesday before the meeting? We should be.
Well, it depends on some of the decisions that they make on the articles.
Yeah, I mean, he won't have final information because obviously, well, G I S, I'm not sure what they're gonna do with that one.
Or maybe it comes from somewhere else.
It will have to probably come after that, at the end of that meeting, and we see where we're at, then Zach will have to put something together.
We have one more meeting before?
Uh, we don't have a scheduled meeting. If we do, we would do it that night.
I'm just, I just think we're, we're in an awkward position where we're coming up against it, we're not voting on our own articles or the dollar figures for them. Right?
Yeah. Those numbers could actually change on town meeting floor, correct?
Every, everyone could.
That's what I'm saying, but no, but the particular articles you're talking about, stabilization indoor, offset the tax rate.
Right.
But I think once the FinCon decides on the articles on Wednesday, then they'll work on those numbers for the week after, whatever.
Okay.
The fire chief, he has certain articles, I'm sure he supported, but he'll, he'll present those. The.
I think some he's passing over to, if I remember correctly, so.
Yeah, I think he reduced an article, I'm pretty sure on that.
Okay, I think that's it, unless I missed anything.
I think you got them all.
Okay.
I think you did.
All right. Application for a one-day entertainment license?
I think Rick just kind of incorporated the changes that I had raised at the last meeting and, and I think it, it looks fine. Um, when do we, when, when does the thirty-day notice kick in? Because I don't know that we've ever gotten thirty-day notice.
Well, that's what I, well, at least I think that was a guideline anyway.
The form is fine.
We'd like to get these things sooner than, rather than later. Yeah.
Form is fine with me.
Me too. I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Bill, seconded by Brian, any discussion?
Nice job, Rick. I know Tom worked on it as well.
He did a great job.
And also, I have to say that in the past, you know, few times now, a couple of weeks, the applications that people make out, print out, whatever, is a lot legible, a lot professional, it's not scribbly anymore.
Try and, try and enforce that a little bit.
Okay, so I think that's, good work, Gene. Brian, anything else on the old business?
I, I would just like to bring this up, I don't know if it's old business or new business, it's, it's old business because it's, for me anyway, because it's the third time that my building's been hit, probably in the last five years. And, you know, I, I, I bring it up in the context that I, I would really like to commend the police department. I was in my office, I, let's see, I think it was the first, so what day was that, was that Wednesday or Tuesday, whatever day that was? And, you know, we felt a, yeah, we felt a shake and, you know, I was with a client and a lot of noise and it was yelling, so, you know, we went outside and it was a huge tractor trailer truck that ripped off the entire light post at, at the intersection of Main and South Main as the vehicle drove up South Main, dragged the light post probably about, I don't know, twenty-five feet or so, hit the building, pulled the guide wire, the whole deal. The truck takes off, thank goodness neighbors got the number. I was on the sidewalk, actually telephoning the dispatcher, and before I even stopped talking, a vehicle, the cruiser came screaming out and went down South Main Street and, and, you know, they, they nailed the operator in front of the McDonald's on South Main Street. So I really like to commend dispatcher Rebecca LaPierre, who answered the call, dispatcher Lisa Trusas, who dispatched the police officer, and it was Officer Patrick Daly that pursued the truck and stopped them at the McDonald's. I mean, it doesn't get any quicker than that. So, you know, personally, I'm appreciative. From the town's point of view, we're very appreciative because there is a significant amount of town damage. And, you know, hit and run, you know, now we'll be able to, you know, to access the insurance on it. So I, I just wanted to thank them for, for just really quick, efficient, professional work. And, you know, I know, I think you had mentioned something earlier, you know, they do this every day, you know, twenty-four hours a day, but, you know, when it affects you personally, you just really get to see how good the department is. And I just want to thank the chief and those, the dispatchers and the officers who just did a great job on that particular incident.
Yeah, no, thank you. Bill, anything on the old business?
Nothing under old business.
Okay. New business, we have waiving of fees for the renovation commission. Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill, any discussion? Veterans Day parade, parade permit?
Move.
Motion, motion by Bill, seconded by Brian, that's unanimous. Robert Friscardi regarding a tag day?
Move.
That's a, motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. Italian veterans, one-day entertainment license?
Move.
This was the one that, there was some work that Rick had done in terms of regulating this event and I think if you'll notice on the backside, there is a large amount of detail in terms of what happened, what's going to happen, and, you know, I think Rick and his office did a nice job with Mike Shane and the thanks and the yanks because it was gonna get to another level with the animals and all kinds of things. So I, I think it looks like it's gonna be a, a, a nice event and it was a, a good job in getting this put together.
Motion by Bill, seconded by Brian, and this also, now see, as we've stated here, you know, they, they articulate what's happening, the involvement, and I think for the future reference, Rick, when, and even maybe you can correspond with the police department, if someone, if I have a field, let's say, a field, and there's going to be a soccer game or a, you know, volleyball game or whatever, and there are going to be two hundred people, then I think, you know, as the owner of the property, they should work with the police department saying, hey, there are gonna be a lot of people here from all over, you know, as far as details, whatever the case may be, okay? So we have to be proactive.
I'll work with Tom on that.
So on that, moved and seconded, that's unanimous. We have Alasia Cultural Porta Geza, one-day license, that's for November eighth.
I'll move.
Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill. All in favor, that's unanimous. Next is the Nosa Senhora, they are proceda, one-day license, this would be at the St. Mary's.
I'll, I'll move.
On October eleventh. Motion by Brian, seconded by Bill, any discussion?
Good job, Mr. Chairman, on the pronunciation.
Not bad, huh? Okay, great job. This is from Kathy Mahoney regarding a food drive coordinator program using our municipal parking lot on Sunday, November second.
I'd move.
From eleven to five, motion by Bill, seconded by Brian, that's unanimous. Bill, Brian, anything else for our new business?
Uh, no, Mr. Chairman.
Bill?
No, we've covered it, I had one question that's related to the farmers market, but we've already talked to Larry about it.
Then we have some alcohol compliance checks. Once again, now, that, this is the third one, there was a alcohol compliance check on sixteen businesses, and all sixteen businesses were in compliance because they write, they ask for the right identification and, and I, I think, Rick, we should send these establishments a, a letter of, thank you for following the guidelines and working with the police chief.
Yeah, chief indicated that on the last page.
Yeah, yeah, but that's him, but I think we should send.
Oh, okay, come on the board, select them, okay.
And then on, that was the first one on Saturday, the twentieth, two thousand and fourteen, on September, and then the next one is the twenty-seventh, and it was the same thing, there are twenty-four businesses, so, nice job. I think that's working and people understand that, hey, gotta follow the guidelines and can't do anything that is gonna put people in jeopardy and the public in jeopardy and all that. Okay, alcohol compliance, next, we have, there's an opening, there was an opening on the registrar of voters, the way it works, if the, if the person is a Republican, then we ask the Republican committee for three names. This particular case, the position is a Democrat, so we asked the Democratic Committee for three names. We received three names, Janice Brand, Donna Horrigan, and John Tien. Brian?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would move to appoint Donna C. Horrigan to the position.
Second.
Both by Brian, seconded by Bill, that we have appointed Donna Horrigan to the posted registrar. Any discussion? All in favor, oppose, unanimous. We have the annual license establishments activity report from the police chief, this is January one through June thirtieth, I believe. Any comments, Brian, on this?
Uh, well, I think there's a typo on that, we, we had the one through June, this is, Uh, well, I think there's a typo on that, we had the one through June, this is, I think, actually taking us through September.
September?
Yeah. You know, there wasn't anything that really jumped out at me, except for perhaps the McDonald's on South Main Street, you know, where they've got two separate incidents with hypodermic needles on the property. There's a lot of other things that are going on there. You know, we've had these kinds of situations up there before, and I don't know if it's worth trying to send the police chief or someone there to try to deal with something, but, you know, when you think about McDonald's, at least I don't, think about hypodermic needles all over the place. Other than that, I mean, you know, the liquor establishments, I didn't see anything that jumped out at me.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
No, nothing jumped out at me. Again, this goes through quite a few months now. I think they've, my general observation is the establishments are calling in more, and, which is keeping down the larger issues, the ones that would raise our attention and have us talking to those license holders, so I'm happier about that.
The last piece of correspondence is Harold Rhodes, Chairman of Milford Commission on Disability, regarding transportation. It's called MWR TA. I think this is something, we've talked about this in the past two, three, two or three years ago, and I think that it might be good for the town to look at this again. This is to review the possibility of bringing transportation services to Milford Public Transportation. Right now, we have Holliston, Medway, Franklin, and Bellingham that use the dial-a-ride and paratransit transportation. Milford doesn't really have anything at this time. I think they do have a bus that comes into town in the morning and at night, but I think it might be good, Harold is recommending that we reopen discussion, a fact-finding situation where by joining the committee, attending the MWR TA, the meetings, I don't know if they're held every month or every other month, but he's recommending, because a lot of people in Milford who may not have transportation, having difficulty, can't afford a car, and it might be something, might be good going forward, just looking at it. By doing this, doesn't cost any money, not, there's no, there is no commitment, no, no cost, no obligation, but I think it might be a good idea to, he's expressed the interest to appoint Harold, and he would attend these meetings whenever they have them, and then I would say probably after two or three meetings, he'll, you know, provide us with an update to the administrator. I know he's talked with Representative Fernandez also, so I think it might be good to relook at this. There's a lot, a lot of towns, when I travel out west, there are more and more towns belonging to different type of transportation systems, and, you know, they have to get the information, it has to be done right, we have to see what the cost is and all that. But I think at least if we do the due diligence and start the process, and then, of course, it always comes back to this board anyway, so if we want to go forward with anything, we will need a plan, a cost, costs and all that stuff, but I think it would be wise to appoint Harold to this committee, and then he can report back to the administrator as appropriate, and then when we do have any definitive information, then we can, you know, review that and plan accordingly. Any, any comments on that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I would agree with you, and in fact, when I saw Mr. Rhodes' correspondence, I went into my file, and it goes back quite a few years since I've been on the board. We've had varying contact from different RTAs, I guess specifically the Metro West one most recently, and, you know, I think from that time period where I think it first started out on a much smaller scale, that the communities who were being assessed by the MBTA could reduce or lose that assessment by forming this, this regional transportation system, it made good financial sense to them, to them. Milford was never in that position, and I think that's what the hesitation was, but, you know, now with the value that's being placed on public transportation, I think understanding in terms of the economy, people in Milford who could certainly benefit from this service, I think the time has come that we really need to explore this very seriously, particularly where so many other towns are doing it, who aren't even being assessed by the MBTA. So it's expanded, it's grown, and I think it's time for Milford to look at it. And, you know, Harold, Mr. Rhodes makes a very compelling argument when he talks about his examples indicating that, you know, Franklin and Bellingham, Holliston and Medway residents can all use public transportation to get to Milford Regional Medical Center for cancer treatments, Milford residents cannot.
Yeah, they have to, right.
So, you know, to me, nothing more needs to be said, you know, so now's the time, I think, to explore this and to, you know, get into this process on a serious basis, evaluate it, see exactly what it can do, because so many other communities are. So I would agree with you.
Yeah, I would agree with your comments as well. I think it's worth investigating, I think, until more information is understood, we just can't go forward, we need the information.
Yeah, because I've been over a couple of houses in the past month with senior citizens in the Milford, the senior van is, it's used, it's booked, and a lot of times, people have always said to me, can you bring up, you know, bring this issue up with the board members, you know, Bill and Brian, about transportation? You know, with so many priorities, but when Bill, when Harold sent that in to us, I said that maybe we should do something and-
By the way, we're not ruling out the possibility of the senior program expanding-
Right.
Right, and not going in this direction, depending on what makes sense.
Is there a motion for Harold?
So it looks like as though the, is, what it is-
Motion to join.
Looks like the motion is to join the MWR TA, and part of that motion would be to allow the town administrator to appoint Milford's delegate.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Yeah. And you'll appoint Harold?
Well, sure.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Brian, anything else?
I think that's enough. Bill?
Nope, that's plenty.
We do have, Kevin, huh? We do have executive session, right, Brian?
Yes, we do.
Rick?
Yeah.
Collector Barney with town council?
Come on.
Which, which, which unit, which, which bargaining unit?
Sewer, sewer, please, that's sewer, yeah.
I'll move.
Okay, moved by-